It was occasioned by the school rejecting the size. The first size of the classroom block was smaller, the one that you had earlier costed. It was smaller. The school rejected, they said, "No, we want a bigger size." To a bigger size. The question is, at which point? Was it before commencement of construction that this variation was done or when? So, when you look at this 131, is the amount that was now floated to another contractor to do the fine, the flooring and roofing and all those scopes of work? Now, we want the variation, the thing about that speaks to the issues of committee made and made a resolution to vary, to increase the amounts on the first, the initial contract. So, that is the story CSU want answers. And the director, you were active at first. Can you be active to help this committee?
Thank you, Chair. So, Chair, the allocation for the project was 750. The contract was 344. So, the variation didn't go to CDFC Chair because CDF already allocated. So, we all funds even when we are doing the variation because that difference between the allocation and also the tax sum chair. So, the-
Director, before we started the meeting, switch off your mic. CS, before we started the meeting, we conferred cap 12 on you. This director of works is misleading this committee. He is contradicting you. This report you have just given us, he says there was no need. Now he's changing that the total amount of the contract is 700, when it is 600 something, then he changes to 700. And there was no need for a variation because that was already contained. And here, he said this 131 was a variation. And here it is, there is evidence. But he's changing now that there was no need for variation because the initial amount approved by CDF Committee was over 700. And there was no need for CDF Committee to meet. Give two minutes.
It's a lovely afternoon. You're tuned into Parliament Television. That Mukushi Town Council making an appearance called Government Accounts. And so, there are certain issues that the committee actually needs to clarify on. And hence, you've seen that the committee has broken off about two to five minutes. And after that, they will be back to make uninformed decisions, decision regarding the way forward as the Mukushi Town Council is making submission. And the members of the committee are actually asking for allocation to the submission that was made earlier by the council. So, in the next few minutes, the committee will be back. So, stay tuned. The rest of the world in the month achievements, the Zambia Association of Women Judges held a fundraising dinner at the hotel in order to honor women with actions that were previously held by in dinner was to celebrate and recognize the achievements of these women in the various roles they have served the country. The money raised from the fundraising venture would be channeled to charity.
Tonight, we gather not only to celebrate excellence, but to reaffirm our collective commitment particularly for vulnerable members of our society. Now, the Zambia international association to the global non-governmental organization whose membership comprises over 10,000 adjudicators spread across 143 countries. And we share the IAWJ's vision of advancing equal justice and upholding judicial integrity. We realize that justice cannot be administered in isolation. It must be accessible, meaningful, and responsive to the realities faced by those that we serve. This evening, we honor and celebrate women who have not but just redefined leadership and inspired future generations. Now, these distinguished women demonstrated resilience, fortitude, and an unwavering commitment to excellence in spheres where women have historically been underrepresented. Now, their achievements are not merely personal victories, but are collective milestones that have paved the way for greater gender inclusion. That women must be at the forefront of shaping policy, influencing this picking, and driving change in the judicial politics, science, and beyond. This is a testament that women can have when given the opportunity to lead and contribute meaningfully to society. Now, distinguished guests, while we celebrate these remarkable women, we must also acknowledge that there are still many others whose experiences remind us that work is far from over. This race tonight to remove barriers to justice and ensure that all people, regardless of their age or ability, can access and benefit from the legal system. With the funds that we are raising tonight, the Zambia Association of Women Judges aims to provide mobility aids such as wheelchairs in the court facility for that include accessible entrances and designated rest areas for those with those physical challenges.
And in recognition of the Zambia Association honored her, honor the Vice President of the Republic of Zambia, Mrs. Whitna Mutale Nalumango, MP of the National Assembly of Zambia.
Tonight is none other, and I want to ask for
Council MP was honored as this the Zambian Parliament. Of the Republic of Zambia, Mrs. Inonge Mutukwawina for serving as the first woman vice president.
Next up, we have another first, a lady who scored the first as the first, who can guess? The first female vice president of the Republic of Zambia. Her honor, Mrs. Inonge Mutukwawina. Let's put, let's put our hands together.
Another notable women who received awards of recognition were Honorable Justice Florence Mumba, the first female judge of the High Court of Zambia. Honorable Justice Lombechwe Sakunda, former acting chief justice, was also awarded for exemplary leadership in the judiciary. The late Honorable Justice Irene Mambilima, who served as the first woman chief justice, was awarded posthumously. The Zambia Association of Women Judges recognized the achievements of women first in the banking sector and gave recognition to Ms. Inga Absa Bank, Zambia, MP. For their achievements from the Zambia Association of Women Judges. Marriages and gender-based violence are some of the most challenging issues in Zambia, particularly in rural areas. It is a practice that not violates rights of young His Royal Highness Chief people, the respected traditional leader who balances tradition with modernity. Through his influence, he actively fights against early marriages and for embrace both their cultural heritage and national values. His Royal Highness begins by sharing his perspective as a traditional leader on how these national values align with the traditions and cultural practices in his chiefdom.
The national values provide the baseline of the ethical compass and regulate our people's daily behavior in the of whether that to behave. And as a chiefdom, we have put in place a theory of change. And this theory of change ensures that it gives us a clearly outlined goal to achieve. And and principles establish for us the ultimate goals that our chiefdom or individuals have to achieve and how to get them. National values guide every decision-making process in our chiefdom. We cannot make decisions without engaging and embracing ourselves in the national values because they act as a mirror for our decision-making. Traditions and cultural practices are supposed to be applied correctly. And so, national values therefore come in to help the leaders and in what is proper, correct, important, beautiful, worthwhile, or desirable. I think we should embrace that behavior, which is it's very well in the national.
His Royal Highness Chief Chamba also highlights the measures being put in place within his chiefdom to promote gender equality and prevent harmful practices such as early marriages.
The chief government 50-50, okay, in terms of decision-making, to ensure that even the vulnerable have a voice. So, what we have done in the land allocation, it okay, we make sure that women and men have the parity in terms of land acquisition. And even in decision-making positions, the women and men have equal numbers in committees. For me, that's very, very important. And then apart from that, we have put in place what we are calling Chamuka Village Leg One Stop and GBV Community Development Center. That is the center we have put in place. And under the roof of that center, what we do is to receive reports, okay, from the vulnerable groups in the community. When we receive reports, we provide basically because we believe that some women don't know where to go when they have got issues. So, we have got people who have been trained as paralegal officers.
Despite ongoing efforts, this vices, early marriages remains a significant challenge driven by poverty, limited education, and cultural norms. To assess the impact of these interventions, we spoke with young girls who broke free from early marriage and returned to school. They shared their struggles, the difficulties they faced, and how education is now giving them a second chance at their dreams.
2015 is a long time ago. So, after that since the so much so because I'm now a bus driver. So, after that we so if only so so one stop center na na so ah so 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 exam I was but so also so combo savings.
2015, I think I mean, but I'm gonna grade eight. Now, I'm gonna I'm gonna end. I'm gonna 26th I'm gonna I'm gonna so so I'm gonna so I'm gonna 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 grade eight. I'm grade nine examination in a boy I'm I'm gonna I'm gonna I'm gonna so 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 I'm gonna so so I'm gonna
Highness Chief Chamuka.
Okay. Make ourselves in a robust advocacy program to ensure that we have legal reforms. Legal reforms that are conducive, that uphold the rights of our people. Happy to mention because of the advocacy, okay, approach or program that we have actually engaged in together with government. I think we have now in place the Children's Code Act number 12 of 22, which protects the rights of the children and which stipulates clearly what is supposed to be done to the perpetrators or to the offenders, even clearly indicating the roles of each party, okay, the children, the parents, the government institutions, outside organizations. To do that. So, this from your institution of 2023. Go. In our case, okay, we show at this time of timber, it is understand that unlike in the past, when we have laws that are treated on self and the people who are engaging in sister marriages. But this time around, this Amendment Act is also marriages. And by doing that, we have now a across all the laws. Okay, that is statutory law and customary law.
Chamuka's thoughts are part of a broader national movement to combat early marriages. However, I know
Okay, they both got.
Bringing a bright future for their daughters, they share their efforts of breaking them. I'm.
No, I'm a teen lady, Kudala. At school, I see. That, oh, that is a boy in a pants. My dad. The bonds, I'm not going to say I'm a boy. I'm not going to say I'm a kid in the school. Now, now my idea, I'm not going to say I'm a woman, I'm a man, I'm a pony. I'm not going to say I'm a woman, I'm not going to say I'm a child. I'm a child, but I'm a. I'm a sadie, I'm a sober la. I'm a makan makan mahori de zebadja. Leon, I'm a boy in school, I'm a computer. I'm a computer. I'm keeping you busy. I'm going to say I'm a boy, I'm a boy, I'm a boy. I'm a. I'm a woman.
Eh, more twenty fifteen. Do you want to come on a crew or a na? I'm a man, I'm a man. Eh, I'm a mivessu. But. Eh, I'm a mivessu. My, my trainings, my civilization, my communities, once. I'm a man, do not value two. Zero seven. I'm a boy. I'm a boy. I'm a boy, I'm a child. I'm a child, I'm a child. I'm a child. I'm a baby. I'm a boy in school, I'm a chief. I'm a boy in school. I'm a boy in school. I'm a man, I'm a man. So, do you want to come on a, I'm a mivessu, I'm a child. His Royal Highness. I'm a boy, I'm a boy. I'm a boy. Me. Child, oh. I'm a boy, I'm a boy. I'm a man, I'm a chief. Center, I'm a kid. I'm a boy. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a guy. I'm a child. Family. I'm a man, I'm a man. This time, to be busy, I'm not going to say I'm educated. I'm a boy, I'm a boy, I'm a boy. I'm a boy, I'm a boy. I'm a boy drinking. So to be busy, I'm not going to say I'm a star. I'm a chief.
Yes. His Royal Highness, Chief Chamaka, reflects on the importance of these values. He has. Emphasizing the need to uphold these values as the foundation for unity, progress, and a prosperous society for all.
National values and principles are a great indicator of the contribution of humanity, human qualities, the of national. Zambia. To the restoration of our values. Content that. We all need to uphold. The principles. They help in molding the character of our nation. As we apply these values and principles, never fall prey to bad conduct, but instead let these values and principles influence our good conduct as individuals and the nation. We need the values and principles as prescribed in the Zambian Constitution in order to be guided on the development and implementation of state policy. Respect of the rule of law is key and unity and peace. That is one.
It is the voices of traditional leaders like Chief Chamaka and the stories of brave young girls that inspire change. Together, they are creating a future where early marriages, teenage pregnancies, and gender-based violence are no longer a barrier to success.
Member of parliament under the United Party. UPND in central province. She is the vice chairperson of the Committee on Sport, Youth, and Child Matters, and she also sits on the Committee on National Guidance and Gender Matters. She is cool, calm, and collected.
My name is, let me say out my name is Cruzosta Halwindi Piri. Um. In a, in a family of, I'll say. At the, um, fourteen, but from my mother and my, my, my real mother and father, we are only six, we were six, let me say so, because I was number sixth. Um, that is being three male and three female. Unfortunately, as it is now, we lost two brothers, so we remain one brother and three sisters. So I'm the last born in the family of mother and a, a dad. So I went to, as I said, primary school at Hakwamba Primary School. And then the secondary school, I went to Saint Joseph Secondary School in Monze District also, where I did my grade eight up to the twelve.
Ms. Halwindi has a bachelor's degree in business administration and entrepreneurship, and has several courses in road maintenance and supervision from the National Council for Construction. Ms. Halwindi once worked as a nurse, but decided to go on early retirement and joined the private sector.
I went to, um, UTH and. Started nursing. So that was my first profession as a registered nurse. I'm saved in the government as a registered nurse for, let me say, three years. And then I decided to go when the government brought the, the voluntary separation where I wanted to retire. I think they. Me to continue. But I think my heart was in the private sector. So I decided to stop, then I started doing business. In the private sector, I first when I just stopped working as a nurse. Of course, I started doing trading, I had a shop, and also supply. And then I decided to also diversify in the, the business I was doing. So I joined the construction industry where I registered my campaign to be doing construction works. Of course, that called for me also to make sure that I trained, so that I've got the knowledge of how to do the bidding. So I trained my first course, I went to National Council for Construction and did labor-based supervision works. Time I had my second born child, Tanguaka, was just five months old. So I went for training, even I went for, uh, doing practicals in the bush with my little baby, the baby boy. So I managed, I did that, and other courses that I did, and a lot of courses, you know, about seven or so courses in construction industry, certificates in that. So that's what I did. And of course, I started to build. First year I registered my campaign, I think I won the first contract. So I've been in the construction industry.
She's married and has five children.
I've got five children. Um, three are male, two are girls. My first born is in Kitwe, Rajesh Harindi Piri. Of course, he did give twelve, but, um, and the little few few courses of in construction industry is also in the private life, he's just doing business. My second born is Tanguaka Piri, who is doing his grade twelve. My third born is Noel Piri, he's at Grand View, doing his grade ten. Then the last borns are twins, they're girls, Suwane Piri and Mafanase Piri, they're doing grade eight. My husband is Mr. Gordon Piri, he's retired, he used to work for prisons, right now he's just doing business also.
Ms. Halwindi joined politics in twenty-ten, mainly inspired by her husband, who was a member of UNIP.
Politics, I think it started in twenty-ten, let me say. Um, of course, my husband, uh, he was a UNIP member, where he tried, of course, to stand as a, um, as an MP. Of course, he didn't make it. From there, because I was helping him much, I developed the interest. So during the time of MMD, I was adopted as a councillor in the high range. Of course, that was the time with the transition when PF came into power. So I lost a seat. Um, from there, because, um, also in the. Now they voted me in to be the chair. For all the contractors. So that position calls for some, but not to be. Article. Of course. Issues to do with politics, of course, I was helping the party, which I joined UPND, I was helping UPND, uh, the party I joined, at least silently. Uh, well, I continued now heading the, the province as the chairperson for, uh, the contractors in the province. I think later on also, I was also, um, chosen as the vice president and, um, NAMSEC, which is the National Association for Small and Medium Contractors, as heading the women wing contractors. So in twenty, twenty-twenty, let me say in twenty-twenty-one, I was approached that, I think there was a candidate who was earmarked for to stand as a candidate in Cabo Central Constituencies, who unfortunately, may, so rest in peace, um, he passed on. And then I was approached, please, we have a vacancy here, would you want to stand as an MP? After praying, I think I was so convinced that I think I need to do, to take it on. That's why I accepted, that's why I came on board to stand. Yes.
Mm-hmm. And how was it when you won?
Well, of, of course, it was something that was, um, I say so nice. Um, I don't believe in failure when I make up in my mind that I want to take on this. So it's something that during my time of prayer, campaigning, I was so convinced in my spirit that I'm going to win.
Growing up among boys helped build her strong character, hence being a female parliamentarian does not intimidate her.
No, 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 I don't feel intimidated. Actually, as I've said, my growing up, you know, I said I grew up with, um, uh, among the boys. And I could do activities. The boys. Look after cattle, even those activities that young men do, like chopping beds, you know, swimming, climbing trees, you know, all those things for me, they are part of me. For me, I'm not intimidated and, um, uh, I feel we can do what men do. Uh, we're learning from my, 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 uh, professional in the private sector where I was a chairperson for all the contractors. You know, many women, even the construction industry, they think it's for men. But as for me, um, I'm a contractor, leading even the contractors in the province during that time before I, I was elected in. And, uh, you know, I, I did very well as a woman contractor. So even now, I believe what men can do, we can still do. So there's nothing that, um, you know, demarcates that this is what a woman can do, this is what women can do, we can all do, we can coexist and, uh, do all what men can do.
She gets a lot of support from the people of Cabo constituency and her party.
Yeah, of course, it's not easy. Yeah, and I say that even now, I know that back. Many people who again strategize. Pull the only woman that have, no, by the way, I'm the first woman in the, my constituency, you know, to be voted in as a woman. The only woman who have, who have been the first one, again trying to pull me back. It's. Once they'll be able to, yeah, okay, ma. The need for there, but, um, of, the support is there, I'm receiving support. Even here, I wouldn't say there is no support despite that I've mentioned that in the committees you find you a second, but I'm receiving. Given responsibility, sometimes. Support is there. Citizens, people come on board to say that, no, we want to make sure the one you are in Saka, at least you are back here will be. Some works that you, you are supposed to. Where, uh, of course. And I'm not here, I'm not in the constituency. Say I'm receiving. And of course, when you go to these offices, there's a project that you'd want to do. I can cite an example, in Unikawa, the roads are very bad, but then I.
Good afternoon, thank you for joining us. Committee on Local Government Accounts continues to interact with Mukushi Town Council. They actually sent them, uh, took a short break. Back and we are here to make, to hear what decision the committee has actually. Council, good afternoon. There you have it, that Mukushi Town Council interacting with the Committee on Local Government Accounts, they've actually taken lunch break. They will be back after lunch to finish off, uh, the committee on local government. And thirty minutes ago, the Mukushi Town Council was actually, you know, um, uh, sent away in a way because the certain information that the committee was not, you know, happy about, and they asked for a break and, uh, they, they came back and they're going to continue with whatever decision they've made after lunch break. In case you've just joined us, time now to look at what has been considered. Committee on Local Government Accounts, starting just after nine-thirty, we did see Mumbwa Town Council make an appearance before the Committee on Local Government Accounts that is considering the report of the Auditor General on the constituency development fund for the financial year ended thirty-first December twenty-twenty-three. And the Mumbwa Town Council was led by Mr. John Ma Chai, who's the council secretary. And, um, the committee actually decided to send Mumbwa Town Council back. So there's some certain information regarding, uh, a certain transaction that did not sit well with the committee. So Mumbwa Town Council have been sent back and have been asked to come back and come back with the director for engineering, for instance, the procurement officer, and the contractor who was involved on a certain project. And they will be advised which day or date they should appear again before the Committee on Local Government Accounts. So that's what happens regarding Mumbwa Town Council. And then a short while ago, we had Mukushi Town Council make an appearance before the Committee on Local Government Accounts. Equally, certain information did not sit well with the committee. And so after lunch break, we'll be able to hear what decision the committee will have made regarding the submission that was made by Mukushi Town Council. And later in the afternoon, the last, the last witness to make an appearance before the committee is going to be Chiwombo Town Council, that will be happening later on in the afternoon. So that's what has happened so far. Would like to thank you for tuning in as usual. Enjoy your lunch and bye-bye. Would like to thank you for tuning in. As usual, enjoy your lunch and bye bye.
So the history covers the entire Zambia. Otherwise, it opened its doors in 2013 in September. So as you enter inside the Jewish Museum, you'll be able to follow their historical history. This was the first Jewish wedding, which was conducted here in Livingston by the Annie Green family and the Harriestas in 1910. First Jewish wedding in Norway. Yes, otherwise, all of these activities are directing the history of Livingston. You can see, these were one of the which was for the Green General Hospital in Livingston around 1910. You can even see. Unfortunately, these buildings are no longer in existence, but as for this one and that capital here, this one, when you go right to the center, you will be able to see that.
[Laughter] [Unintelligible] 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 [Music] [Music] [Unintelligible] [Unintelligible] [Music]
It's very good scum from the old school. So we have the red children here for first and the green children fight fight. Obviously, the first is being controlled by ZEP because the fight fight in the flames can affect the people in the middle. The Red Team is the final goal today. And the good time is very strong on Sunday. We're not going to lose. United States can take it down. We find we want to kill. Okay, so that changes me through now. South Africa in the lead. Oxford coming second. Cambridge lagging behind in third. Which is what we're going to take for the victory of the World Cup this year now. So that we can come in strongly. Here comes South Africa getting very very strongly. I'm going to give them the respect. So I'm going to give them the honour. I'm going to give them the mention. And we have to find very easy here. Easy then to play. So I have to say that I'm not playing that easy. So I think it's just a little bit of for you have to stay. One place is Zenby too. Outstanding.
Zambia! The first thing to realize is that history repeats itself all the time. And what happened in 1910? The authorities back then brought the world championships of rowing to this town. And it was a marketing coup. Because you can only host World Cup events in peaceful countries. And the movement of investors into this country back then in 1910 was enormous. So if you do it again, we should see it all happen. Because these guys will leave here praising South Africa. It's been very peaceful whilst they've been here. And actually, that's what I like. Very wonderful people. They're always happy and excepted with open arms. And we had an amazing traditional event yesterday. His Majesty here. Now, if people go to London to watch the changing of the dark white cars and red tunas, imagine coming to see a wonderful barge over here from the river. Our problem is Zambia is big. It's four times bigger than England. It's twice the size of the African. So a lot of our events are so far away. It's difficult to get people to them. So if we can bring them to the central focus, which is Livingston. It's got the Victoria Falls, the highest bridge in the world from 1905 at the time. All these wonderful other assets too. And we can bring a little bit of traditional Zambia here too. Then my job is easy.
Come on, guys. Give it more power. One, two, three. Change!
So as the Absa Group, which is the current company of partners by Zambia, we are delighted to have been involved with this list of regatta as a mark of what Absa promises to bring in the Zambian market. And this is the partnership of how we want to support the different sectors of Zambian economy. And so this is one way that we're supporting tourism sector. Because we believe that tourism, tourism is the future of Zambia. And with Absa coming into Zambia, you can look forward to more partnerships because we are building on the rich heritage. The 100-year heritage of Barca has set whilst in Zambia. We understand the Zambian market and with Absa and with the sponsorship of Yosin, better things lie ahead. And so Zambia can look forward to great things with Absa.
[Unintelligible]
On the pay 50,000 kuwata. This is something. Actually, the 50,000 kuwata we are talking about here is not a final payment for them, is it? The answer is no.
Parliamentary committees monitor the activities of government ministries. Is this assembly of Zambia on capacity enhancement workshop at Redisson Blue Hotel. And for the local government the aim of the thing was to prepare committee to the general on the audit of the authorities for the financial year ended 2023. The training drew experts from the Auditor General's office, the Accountant General, the Zambia Public Procurement Authority, the intergovernmental fiscal local units and the Ministry of Finance and National Planning. During the official opening of the workshop, National Assembly of Zambia Deputy Clerk Procedure, Mr. Stephen Kawimbe, said the workshop provided an opportunity for members of parliament to identify critical areas to follow up with relevant officials when they appear before the committee regarding the findings of the 2023 Auditor General's report.
This session provides an invaluable opportunity to unpack the reports of the Auditor General, equipping members to engage meaningfully during interactions with witnesses. This workshop is a collaborative effort to return your support to the National Assembly of Zambia Project 2 to the Parliamentary Budget Office. Beyond this workshop, I encourage members to fully utilize the expertise of the Parliamentary Budget Office, whether as a committee or as individual members of parliament. That is why the Budget Office is there. Anytime you need research information on fiscal markets, the Budget Office is there. By the end of this workshop, I am confident that members who have identified critical areas can follow up with relevant officials when they appear before the committee to orally present their memorandum. To yield valuable insights several potential avenues that the Auditor General as amended in 2016 relates to public financial management. This underscores parliament's pivotal role in overseeing the mobilization, equitable distribution and efficient and efficient utilization of public resources to drive national development. The audit process and its outcomes are fundamental mechanisms for assessing whether public funds deliver value for money or fall short of expectations. In this regard, the Commission of Local Government Accounts is strategically positioned to oversee the utilization of public resources at a grassroots level where public services impact the nation.
And Parliamentary Budget Office Director, Mr. Misa Okateshi, highlighted some of the notable findings in the report and how the workshop will provide a wide understanding to the committee members.
This intervention, honorable members, offers the committee an opportunity to critically examine the issues that are contained in the report and as well as enable you to make an initial assessment if there are any notable changes in the issues that are highlighted. The report that will be under consideration brings out both positive and negative developments. We just highlight just a few negatives. I'll begin with the negatives. There were something that are worth mentioning that are not going in the way we would like them to do. One is the recurring of some audit requests. With the advent of digitalization and doing things electronically, we would expect that they would fall out, but we still see some of them that were supposed to affect a more paper-based arrangement, but we still see these things happening. Then also, the continued high dependence of local authorities on national support is also something that is worth noting. That is, yeah. Of course, national support is important, but it's equally important that local authorities are able to generate their own money much higher than the national support that we have. A number of local authorities really depended on national support.
And Chairperson of the Committee on Local Government Accounts, Mr. Mishek Nyambose MP, said that the training will help members understand and appreciate the challenges local authorities face in implementing their mandate.
Workshops of this nature are invaluable as they provide members with the opportunity to fully grasp the complexes of certain queries and gain a deeper understanding of the remedies or remedial measures that can be undertaken. Fellow members, I want to commend the Office of the Auditor General for having carried out an extensive audit exercise covering all the 116 local authorities in the financial year under review. This is indeed an achievement from the oversight perspective. It is, however, regrettable to note that some issues highlighted in the report are recurring, underscoring the need for heightened accountability and oversight by parliament. I want to indicate or to take advantage to my fellow members that we were privileged together with my vice to attend a workshop organized by Auditor General. We want to thank you that you called the chairpersons and vice chairpersons of Oversight Committees, the Public Accounts Committee, Parastate Committee, and our committee, and I was privileged to be there. And we shared a lot of issues that we would like to undertake on how zero audits for our country.
And Acting Deputy Auditor General, Mr. Emmanuel Tembo, disclosed how ready the Auditor General's office was in handling the local authority decentralization.
One of the issues definitely as an office and as parliamentary committee, we are thinking now how are we going to handle the dispossession of the local authority decentralization. The councils that devolve their functions. So even us, we are likely to change the way we will be reporting. Special point forward. I don't know if that might crystallize in the 2026 report, but these are issues because already we are told this has started. So it's one of the issues we are starting to think about it. There is another issue which is in-house to us, but it can also have a bearing in the audit coverage. The 96 town councils we are funded by the World Bank, but because of the realignment of priorities, the issues of droughts, and also the realignment of the World Bank, going forward this year, the funding to the office. Because the Act specifies that councils are supposed to budget for audit fees. So we are going to revert back to the issues of audit fees. There are pros and cons. The Auditor General has put a way also to handle that. We can start that contract. We are allowed to do that. But again, when you look at what we have at the moment. To go the status quo of ensuring given this year that we audit all the accounts of the councils.
And Director, Lusaka Province Audit Office for the audit of accounts of the local authorities for the financial year 2023.
The audit was carried. Since the local authorities had foundation initially, we had 113 audits with qualified opinion. Opinion. If you do the comparison, we are seeing that today has been an improvement because from the previous one, we had 45 which were qualified in 2022. They were.
If you are able to share with us.
Issue of transferring airing council officers from one station to another, making it so difficult by this committee to get down to the root cause. Transfer after having successfully been interrogated by this committee.
What economic impact will fiscal decentralization bring to the economy? In this regard, what economic index is suitable to describe the impact of fiscal decentralization in the country?
In the past two years and equally this year, we met that deadline. So if there is any council perhaps which had an implication, it is maybe the. What they. Many councils have got their own eye. But. No, that was rigid, I think.
Why are this? Can we have? But it is not. Same. But if we have someone from the council, they can't come. They that. I don't believe. The other problem. And errors. The people responsible are supposed. And the officer is. Before you transfer, why are they brought to you? And we are having people. That's also people from the local authorities helping them answer questions. I think, again, it comes back to Minister of Local Government. I don't know why they do that. Maybe because these people were not going to parliament to answer. Maybe they needed to just orient them, not really helping. But they are the ones who were wrong and who were on the ground they're supposed to. But one thing I realize is that some of these principal officers, I think you have seen it here, even when we are at the committee. People just fear and you find them shivering and you failing to answer questions. It's important maybe if we have people from local authorities to just orient their officers and tell them that it's not a death place. They need just to be calm and learn the party.
The first day of the workshop gave members an insight on the process involved in coming up with the report of the Audit General. On the second day of the Capacity Enhancement Workshop at Radisson Blue Hotel, members were set to finalize themselves with the content of the report vis-à-vis linking it to the budget. And Parliamentary Budget Office Director, Mr. Misa Okateshi, was on hand to take participants on parliamentary financial oversight of local authorities by highlighting some of the obligations of the local authorities.
What we see is that currently exercise is mostly, oversight is being exercised is mostly the recourse of the Auditor General. Or. Which the committee needs to take interest in. If at the moment maybe consideration may not. But the institutions have to comply. This. Now, this. Just to provoke discussion that oversight can actually be enhanced beyond waiting for reports of the Auditor General with regards to operations of local authorities. These reports are submitted. It's a statutory requirement for submission of these reports to parliament.
Mr. Okateshi further talked about the queries noted in the report and shared some of the improvements that were recorded in 2022 and 2023.
There were three specific queries that were related to stores management and accounted for fuel failure to inscribe assets and accounted for stores. How widely occurring this particular query is among councils that were audited? So you can see that most of them are below 10%. So they're not widely occurring among local authorities. Yeah. But what is important probably for these ones is that they also present, because they're not widely occurring. They are not pervasive. So it becomes an opportunity to address the root causes before they.
Analysis Expenditure Budget Office and was on hand to analyze the revenue and expenditure matters.
Generally, we realize that if you look at the expenditure matters that have been reported in the Auditor General's report and supported payments, for example, have an occurrence of 10.3% out of the 116 councils. One example. Is at 12.9%. That's a component which maybe the committee can be of interest because of the huge occurrence above 10%. So in terms of the application of funds, about 15 councils, at 12.9% of 116 local authorities actually means applied funds amounting to 17.2 million kwacha. So the committee may take special interest in unsupported payments, irregular cash payments, and. Has dropped slightly from 3.58 billion to 3.52. The second is failure to collect revenue, which has actually increased from 656 million in 2022 to about 1.1 billion in the current Auditor General's report.
Dr. Isaac Ngoma, an audit financial expert from the European Union Support Programme to the National Assembly. His presentation was on output-based budget performance.
In other jurisdictions and even ourselves would refer to that as performance budgeting because it looks at features of. Focus on the output. So. The known as performance budgeting. And some time back, you remember that the Office of the Auditor General made the presentation and did mention that they also want to move towards performance audits. So this is work in progress and it's something that is going to come resourcefully with forms taking place to performance-based audits. So OBB is defined as budget. members are going to ultimately bring satisfaction to the budget allocations which are the citizens
of committee.
Our authorities have the the
Decentralization we see have the powers to choose the projects.
Mr. Martin Phillips, a financial expert and has worked in the Ministry of Finance and National Planning for 30 years and is currently working with the Parliamentary Budget Office. He took time to respond to some questions raised by the committee members.
I think I'll take the very first question, which is really quite a very complex question. Can can local authorities actually handle extra functions and evolution? I think this is a very, really quite a complex question, almost a philosophical question. And I know people say perform the functions they've got already. You look at solid waste management has been a function of local authorities for decades. And clearly, it's a function which local authorities have are failing to handle properly. And I think the reasons for this are quite complex. I was looking at the consolidated budgets for all the local authorities for 2024. And if you sum up all the budgets for all 116 councils, it's just over 10 billion quacha. You look at the budget for 2024 for central government, it was about 178 billion. And the outcome is going to be over 200 billion. So the amount of resources going to local authorities is less than 5% of what central government pays. So you know, part of the explanation is definitely vertically imbalanced, that we're putting, we're giving functions to local authorities. We're saying we're bringing matching resources, but actually most of the resources are still handled at the central level. So in fact, we're setting local functions. You may always grants to handle those functions, but the bulk of the money is still at the center. So that's certainly part of it.
I want to deal with the issue of the IDPs and the persistent issue concerning the workings of the WDCs. Where that there are capacity issues pertaining to the WDCs, one. Then secondly, the WDCs operate more in a voluntary realm. So they are volunteers. And some of them, they are, you know, not well schooled in matters pertaining to development planning. And I've been to places also working with our colleagues in the civil society where we had first engagements and interactions with the to me worried. So this is something that requires a political decision. And this member, some of the issues they they are not paid anything.
And local government accounts committee person, Mr. Mishik Nyambose, assured the nation that the committee will put the knowledge gained to good use and make sure that they contribute to national development through scrutinizing local authorities.
This committee, your committee is not a new committee. We have done our part. All stakeholders private sector perform, there are no missing vouchers. He shall as members of parliament to influence change, legislative change, so that people can be accountable in this country. We cannot continue as a nation, business as usual. The president is giving a lot of money, CDF. The people of Zambia would like to see the benefit of these monies that are given to the people of Zambia through the local authorities.
It is in the search that the two-day Capacity Enhancement Workshop held at Radisson Blue Hotel will help in highlighting areas of focus for committee members of the local government accounts as they consider of local year ended 31st December 2023.
I started my age of 21 at Juanda Primary School in Isoka. In 1978, I went at Rittila Girls Secondary School. We were the 12 of us who applied at Rittila Girls Secondary School, but only two of us went are the ones who had did it too. After completion, I started working at Nambod as a cashier. I worked for four years from 1984. I did that. At that time, I was already married to Mr. Kashin, my husband. I went to nursing school. In 2021, I started work at Isoka General Hospital. I I and started it as something that I wanted to do. In 1912, may his soul rest in peace. I went to Belgium as a diplomat. I worked in Belgium as a diplomat for four years. Then I requested for a transfer. I went to Malawi as Deputy High Commissioner from 2015 to 2017. After that, I went back to Chinsali. I've done a degree in human resource management and a diploma in public administration. In 2020, I applied to contest as a Member of Parliament for Isoka. Fortunately, I was adopted. And I started my campaigns. On 12th August 2021, I was elected as a Member of Parliament. I am proud to tell you that I'm the first female MP in Isoka constituency since 1964. Isoka constituency is a constituency, it's a district which has one constituency, Isoka constituency. It borders with Nakonde, Mafinga, Chama and Chinsali. Isoka was the one who gave birth to Nakonde and Mafinga. It has 14 wards. We also borders with Tanzania and Malawi. My development agenda. I am born as a leader. When I was adopted, I started campaigning until I won because leadership is in my blood. And when I became a Member of Parliament, I started working together with my people and also my two chiefs. One is his Royal Highness Chief Katete. The other one is his Royal Highness Chief Kafimbi. And also the headmen, we started working together. And also what I have been talking and I'm still talking is to make sure that we work together. I've embraced everyone in my constituents despite their party affiliation. It be UPND, DP, PF, MMD, NDC. I've told them that let's work together. Politics are overdue. This time, it's time for developing our Isoka. No one is going to develop Isoka. It's only us, the people of Isoka, who are going to develop it. And when I became a Member of Parliament, I found about 55 unfinished projects. Then we start as a committee. There was CDF for 2021. So we thought that we get at least those projects which were 100,000 and below. And we managed to get 16 projects which were finished. Otherwise, Isoka is now speeding up with the works. And also for the projects, we were in fight about 40 something projects, 40 something projects. We even advertised. The applicants came along. We, I as a Member of Parliament for Isoka, have told my people in Isoka that only people, only contractors of Isoka should apply. They should be the one to be given those projects because that money is for Isoka. Only Isoka people should benefit for that CDF because CDF has been given to all the constituencies in Zambia, 156. I'm not going to allow anyone from any constituency to come and benefit from my constituents. I have my people, I have very good contractors in Isoka and those people should benefit. That money should remain for Isoka so that Isoka can develop. My last word to the people is, my people, let's work together as a family. When we work together as a family, we are going to take Isoka forward. And I'm also encouraging my youths to make sure that they involve themselves in businesses and they should also go to school because we've been given free education. We've been given money to, for them to go to school to do their skills at the trades. We have a trade in Isoka. Young children should go to that trade. And also baseris, we have also given students baseris. They should go to school. They should make sure that they involve themselves to make sure that they become educated. Because once you are educated, everything will be okay, especially our girl children. When you educate a girl child, you educate the whole nation. So I'm edging you, my people in Isoka, that please, please, let's put politics aside. Time for politicking has already gone. This is time to develop Isoka. No one, no one is coming, will come and develop Isoka. It is only us, the people of Isoka, who are going to develop Isoka.
My name is Elvis Tisha Alankandu, a Member of Parliament for Kaputa constituency. I'm a family man with four children, have a wife who is a teacher. And I'm 51 now. So the way I'm looking is not the way you may, you may see me because sometimes you may look youthful, but you are not. So 51 is not a joke. So I I was schooled in Kaputa, so I'm very primary to be specific. Then went to Kamba Secondary Technical School where I did my secondary education. From there, I just did business management and marketing. So with advanced diploma. My constituency is a very huge one. Especially that first I want to say that this is a constituency that the Vice President came from. And he was there for two terms. So I think one or two Members of Parliament had followed then me. So this is a very huge assignment that I've found myself in. Because you are aware that she did a lot of things. So now people are able to compare what she did and what we are doing. So indeed, we need to work extra hard. But by and large, I would say that it's a very large constituency. Local constituencies, normally they are very, very large, looking at 17 wards. And it's about 180 kilometers from where we board the Chienghe and Chimamirongo on the other side. So as I said, it's very So as I said, it's a very large constituency. But we do manage. You can't get from one end to the other in one day or two days. It takes me 10 days to finish that constituency. If I want to finish it 10 days, sometimes 14 days. Because in 10 days, you need to make sure that at least you cover so many ones in a few days. Yeah, but I think we are managing. The developmental agenda for that... I think I was voted in because of that. What I'm about to say, one, my people, they have never seen a paved road, which we call a tarmac road. It's a paved road, they have never seen it. And where you can see it is about under 50 kilometers just to find a paved road. Being a rural constituency, we have impassable roads that we do have. But I think it's something that we are now addressing. One important issue that we're addressing is buying the ethmog equipment which we have bought. So some of the roads that are in Kaputa constituency will be done by ourselves. The only road that will be looking for government support is the main one, which comes from Muncherenge, passes through Kaputa and go to Nsama district. Now, this is not the only district that I've never seen a paved road. Even Chienghe constituency or Chienghe district and Nsama on the right side, they have never also seen a tarmac road. So I think these three constituencies or districts, I think we have a lot to do to make sure that our people really see development. Because for them, what they may view as development is to put a road there. For them, that's it. There are also other issues like building schools, we are doing that. We are also building clinics or health centers. Our focus has been also to put up the skills training institution there. Because we don't have. So we are exporting a lot of our children to either Luapula and Luapula province, which is Mansa, and Kasama, which is in the northern province. So I want to say situation where we have our own skills training center in the district or in the constituency. Apart from that, we are also looking at sports facilities. We have a lot of talent in those constituencies like mine. But I think what they are lacking are facilities. So we are also looking at how best we can try to put up even a small multi-sports facility in the constituency. So that a lot of our young people be able to use that facility and be able to be identified as potential footballers, potential athletes. So I think those are some of the issues that we are looking at. Most importantly, we do not have a hospital that we can call hospital. Yes, there's a hospital there, but I think it could be level one. And we have a lot of people now in Kaputa district. So we need a very big hospital so that we listen on referring our patients to Kasama, which is about 400 kilometers. On the other side, the other hospital which is near to us is about 150 kilometers. So we do have a lot of challenges in terms of patients when they are defected and die along the way. So I think that is also a very big challenge. There are also other important issues that we may look at. But I think Rome was not built in a day. There are these issues of roads, issues of infrastructure development. I think for us, these are some of the important issues that we need to work on. In fact, some of them even before, especially the roads, before the rainy season, we should make sure that we do these roads. And looking forward now to government to ensuring that we are given a paved road which will really assist us in terms of getting the raw materials because we do have. We also have gotten into famine. And I think we have a lot of rice there, this Kaputa rice, which we need also to explore. We have also ground nuts, maize now is being also, we have fish because of Lake Muero and Tipa. So there's a lot that we have in our district. But because of the roads that are impassable, it is very difficult for people to trade. So those are some of the issues that we need to work on. The word of hope. Obviously, we were voted on the ticket of change, first and foremost. And we're going to do just that. The hope that I've continued giving the people of Kaputa is that they voted the right people, starting with the president himself, the vice president who is also heading from that same area. We are now a member of parliament, he was also a minister. So I don't, we should not have reason at the end of the day not to develop that particular area. Especially that we have the vice president who comes from there, I'm coming from there. The president has been there also and promised people that they will have some changes when we run. Some of, these are some of the promises that we are trying to fulfill. So let them just continue, continue having that trust in us. And I believe that by 2026, they will have a lot of changes in Kaputa. And if we are given another mandate, definitely Kaputa will never be the same. A lot of things will change. That's what we are looking for. So them also, I should also plead to them to make sure that we work together. Because all these developmental projects that we are about to undertake and some of them have already started undertaking them, we can't do them ourselves as member of parliament or the vice president or the president. We need them to join hands with us so that we work together and then we'll be able to see a change that we've been looking for in Kaputa constituency.
My e-parliament mobile application. First, download the app on either Play Store or App Store and install. After installation, open the app. Step one, register your personal information. That's your names, gender, ethnicity and date of birth. Step two, add your contact information, your email, phone number and home address. Step three, select your constituency. Step four, create your four-digit PIN. At this point, the system will send an SMS to your mobile number with a one-time passcode. Step five, confirm with one-time passcode that are sent to your mobile. Step six, sign in using your phone number and the four-digit PIN. And step seven, create your submission and submit. My e-parliament, bringing parliament closer to you.
Good afternoon and thank you for still being with us on Parliament Television. My name is Tazza Piri and I'm joined by Chola Kaoma, our sign language interpreter. Shortly, we will be crossing over to the Committee on Local Government Accounts in which they are receiving a submission on the consideration of the report of the Auditor General on the constituency development fund for the financial year ended 31st December 2023. And this afternoon, we do expect Chivombo Town Council to make their submission and they will be led by their council secretary, Ms. Grace Kanyata. And of course, there's been a change for those of you that have been following. I know you were expecting Mukushi Town Council to make an appearance just after lunch. But Mukushi Town Council will make their appearance after Chivombo Town Council makes their submission. And just to keep you reminded that Mukushi Town Council was sent out for the committee to discuss certain issues that did not sit well in their submission. And just now, we cross over to the committee. Keep watching Parliament Television.
Council secretary, Chivombo Town Council and your team, welcome to your committee. Before we start our meeting, I would like to extend the immunities under cap twelve of the laws of Zambia that protects members of parliament from choosing to mislead or give false information. The same cap twelve shall be invoked and shall be used against you. It is my belief on behalf of the committee that you not choose the latter. You give us information that will help us come up with a report that we shall use or we shall present on the floor of the House. With that said, CS, I would like to ask you to give individual introductions, starting with yourselves, your position and your names.
My name is Grace Namkoko Kanyata, council secretary for Chivombo Town Council. I'll now invite my colleagues to introduce themselves.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Likuaskanyanga, director engineer in Chivombo Council.
Good morning, Chair and honourable members of parliament and parliament witnesses. I'm Lupale Mobanga, director planning from Chivombo Town Council.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair. I'm Twambo Hajinto, council advocate.
Good afternoon, Chair. I'm Twambo Hajinto, Council Advocate for Chivombo Town Council.
Perfect.
Good afternoon, Chair. I'm Witola Cholle, Senior Procurement Officer, Chivombo Town Council.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, committee members. Good afternoon, permanent witnesses. My names are Ian Silungwe, Director Finance, Chivombo Town Council.
Thank you. The other members behind, you can go behind there. There is a mic on the other side. You can use that one for your introductions, one by one.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, members. I'm Stens Yangu, Assistant Procurement Officer, Chivombo Town Council.
Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Melvin Kalumba, Director of Monetary and Administration.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and good afternoon, members. My name is Vene Garimampondo, the Internal Director, Chivombo Town Council.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Chris Pinwanga, Assistant Accountant.
Thank you. We can now have our permanent witnesses.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Siame Devi. I'm representing the Auditor General. I'm Director of Audits. I'll ask my colleagues to introduce themselves. Thank you.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Chivombo. My name is Madrin Mumba, Principal Auditar, Cow Office.
Good afternoon. I'm Lugenda Sinyani from the Planning and Research Department in the Office of the Auditor General. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mumbasaka from the Ministry of Finance and National Planning, Office of the Accountant General. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, members of the committee. Good afternoon, Chivombo. My name is Achua Davis, Assistant Director, Local Authorities Department, Mutual Finance, Audit Division. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, committee members. Chivombo Town Council, good afternoon and you are welcome. My name is Joyce Kubansa from Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, members of the committee. Good afternoon, Chivombo. My name is Molumbenj Kasanka from the Service Commission.
Thank you. We can have the Clerk's office.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. My name is Maxo Cheka from the Office of the Clerk.
Good afternoon. My name is Rachel Chileshe from the Office of the Clerk.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair. My name is Chama Kasander from the Office of the Clerk.
Thank you.
Good afternoon to your honorable Chairperson and other honorable members, our witness. Good afternoon. I am Chidimbo Elaja from the Office of the Clerk of National Assembly and you are welcome. Thank you, Chair.
Honorable member from Fumbwe.
Thank you, honorable Chairperson and good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. And Chivombo Council, you are welcome to your committee. My name is Elliot Kamundo. I'm a member of Parliament from Fumbwe.
Thank you, Mangango.
Thank you so much, Chair. Good afternoon to you. Good afternoon, fellow honorable members of Parliament. Good afternoon, Chivombo Town Council. Good afternoon, our permanent witnesses. Viewers and the listeners out there, good afternoon to you too. I'm Weni Loamba, Member of Parliament from Mangango. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable member from Fumbwe, for Kaumbwe.
Good afternoon, Chair and good afternoon, Chivombo Town Council. Welcome to your committee on Local Government and Accounts. I am Honorable Dr. Aaron Muanza, Member of Parliament for Kaumbwe, constituency in Petawke District of the Eastern Province. Thank you.
Thank you, honorable members. Chivombo Town Council, I am Mishek Mutetwa Nyambosay, representing the wonderful people of Chasefu constituency in Eastern Province of Zambia and privileged to chair your committee. CS and your team, I would like to appeal to you to become, you are not in the court. You are appearing as a witness. What we want to establish is why and how did it happen? How do we make or come to stop certain issues that were taking place? With a view of maximizing the benefits of the enhanced CDF. So help us, help your committee. The other thing I can mention is that we are live on TV and probably on radio. So where you feel you need support, information from your staff, that's why they have accompanied you. Make them available to help you to answer some of the issues that you feel responsible and respective officers should do that. But they are equally bound by the Cap 12. With that said, I would like to ask you, CS, to make your presentation.
I should oblige, Chair. On page three, I'll go to introduction. One, Chivombo Town Council acknowledges the Office of the Auditor General for its review of our CDF operation.
Sorry, CS. On account of time, I would like to appreciate the good report you have done and all these important information such as introduction. I would like to appeal and guide that you just go to the query. You read the title of the query. In this case, you come to specific issue, issues, audit findings, observations and management responses. Or you go to the actual query, which is on page... Any guidance? It is grants empowerment Katua constituency. Then you go to the cause of the query, action taken and remedial measures. You can speak to the graph or to the tables, but that's the guidance. You read the title, like in this case, grants or Katua council, Katua constituency, I mean. Then grants empowerment. Then you go to the management response. I mean, cause of the query, then action taken, then remedial measures. Before that, sorry again, we have been joined by one honorable member of Parliament. I will ask him to introduce himself. Honorable member.
Chair, thank you very much. Good afternoon, permanent witnesses. Afternoon, Chivombo Town Council. Good afternoon, colleagues. My name is Mununda Darius, Member of Parliament for Siavanga constituency. Thank you, Chairperson.
You can go ahead, CS.
Thank you, Chair. We'll go to number two, specific issues, audit findings, observations and management responses. Two point one, Katua constituency grants empowerment. We go to page four, cause of query. Management acknowledges the audit findings and wishes to state that the beneficiaries diverted funds because of the variance between the amount applied for and the amount approved. Whereas the approved amount was less than the amount applied for as seen in the audit findings. The beneficiaries diverted the funds without the consent of the council and CDF committee. Action taken. Management wishes to state that requests for change of projects by the two groups and recommendations by the CDFC to PLGO's office for final approval has been done. Further, monitoring conducted to the two groups showed the records for the village banking and inspected the procured goods. See Appendix one. Chair, do I wait? You go through Appendix one or I proceed?
You proceed.
Thank you, Chair.
Which refer to it during time of interventions.
Thank you, Chair. Remedial measures. The Constituency Development Fund Committee, in line with the ministerial guidance, no longer approved grants below what a potential beneficiary applied for and management is also strictly adhering to those guidelines at the point of disembessment. Management has also intensified sensitization activities to community members in order for them to fully understand the sole purpose of the empowerment of funds. Two point two, Kembek constituency unimplemented projects. Chair, I'll go to the cause of query. Number one, twelve projects with an allocated sum of 5,292,863. Management acknowledges the audit findings and wishes to report the procurement and delivery of desks was delayed due to an appeal in the award of contracts that led to a six-month delay in contract execution and leading to deliveries not being completed as the contracts were still ongoing at the time of audit. The road formation works involving the light grading of roads were undertaken following the procurement and delivery of new grader which were ongoing at the time of audit. For the procurement of equipment from Kanga Radio Station, the funds allocated following the variation of funds were insufficient to undertake the project. The initial funds allocated for the procurement of the TIPA were insufficient to undertake the project. Action taken. Management wishes to report that out of the total of 2,070 desks, a total of 1,398 were delivered or have been delivered with the remainder to be delivered by 30th of April 2025. The road formation procurement of... The procurement of a radio station equipment and TIPA have since been completed and delivered and documents are available for verification. Kindly see Appendix two. Remedial measures. Management to ensure that projects are completed on time and resources are located adequately. Number two, ten projects with an allocated sum of 6,500,175. See the table below. I'll go to... To the cause of query. Management acknowledges the audit findings and wishes to report that the construction of girls' and boys' dormitory was delayed due to an appeal in the award of contracts that led to six months delay in contract execution, leading to the deliveries not being complete as the contracts were still ongoing at the time of audit. The construction of six projects was delayed due to slow pace by our local contractors in executing the projects. Further, the road formation works involving the light grading of roads were undertaken following the procurement and delivery of a new grader which were ongoing at the time of audit. And the construction of one project was delayed because the initial funds allocated for the projects were insufficient to complete the project. I can confirm now that, Chair, completion of a staff house at Saint Aubrian Clinic in Chabona is now complete. Action taken. Management wishes to report that all the ten projects have since been completed and the documents are available for verification. Kindly see Appendix three, which is speaking to that. Remedial measures. Going forward, Chair, management to ensure that all projects are executed within the stipulated contract period and reasonable timeframe to avoid recurrence of such an audit query. In addition, three projects approved for implementation in 2023 with an allocated amount of 1,078,526 had not been implemented at 31st, as of 31st October 2024. Cause of query. Management acknowledges the auditor's observation and wishes to state that an aggrieved bidder had filed an objection with ZPPA. So the awarding contract was put on hold until it cleared the same. And this, Chair, was under the Public Procurement Regulation 243 Sub 1 of 2022. After a detailed assessment of the grader was done, it was found that it was irreparable. Chair, this is a situation where we wanted to procure an engine, but after assessing the whole grader, it was discovered that the grader was not irreparable. On fewer requisites, it was as a result of the long processes then in the procurement of earth-moving equipment, Chair. Action taken. The two thirty desks have been procured and delivered. While the grader engine project was varied as addition funds for the construction of Blushon Block at Chinongola Boys' and Girls'. The fuels have been procured and utilized towards a grading of roads. Kindly see Appendix four. Remedial measures. Going forward, Chair, management to ensure that all projects are executed within the stipulated contract timeframes to avoid audit query. As of 31st October 2024, the projects had not commenced. A physical inspection of selected community projects carried out on the 14th of October 2024 reviewed the following. B, delayed commissioning of laboratory. I'll go straight to the cause of query, Chair. Management acknowledges the auditor's observation and wishes to state that the delay in handover was due to the delay by the contractor in rectifying some of the snags which were identified. Action taken. The Malambanyama Laboratory project was handed over on 6th November 2024 and it is now in full use. Kindly see Appendix five, which is speaking to the same. Remedial measure. Management will in future ensure that contractors rectify the identified defects in good time. C, delayed completion of Chinongola School dormitories. Go straight to the cause of query. Management acknowledges the audit findings and wishes to report that the delay of the project was caused by the slow pace of the contractors engaged. Action taken. The project is now completed and kindly see Appendix C. Appendix six. Remedial measures. Management to ensure that all projects are executed within the stipulated contract period and reasonable timeframes to avoid recurrence of such an audit query. D, soft loans. I'll go to the cause of query. Management acknowledges the auditor's findings and wishes to report that through the council, through the council, the three beneficiary groups were monitored and guided on the needs to apply to apply through the council for the change of project through the work development committees. However, it was not achieved at the time of audit. Further, individual loan beneficiaries were written to informing them of the current loan status and were all invited for a meeting to resolve the matter with a view of payment plans. The meeting was not attended in full and the amount had not been recovered by the time of audit. Action taken. Management wishes to report that in working hand in hand with Zambia National Commercial Bank to provide bank statement, loan agreement forms and understanding instructions signed by the loan beneficiaries to facilitate the recovering at the appropriate recoverable amounts. Kindly see Appendix seven. Remedial measures. The ministry shall be engaged on the inclusion in an application form where the form should strictly state that change of project be applied upon approval by CDFC. Cause of... Number three, specific audit findings, observations and management. Appendix one, budget, funding and expenditure. Management response, cause of query. Management acknowledges the auditor's observation and wishes to state that the retained funds were withheld for the purpose of construction of Chief's Palaces and the top half on purchase of motor vehicles. The balance on the 2023 funding against expenditure funds reserved for CDF programs that were ongoing at the time and the year 2023. Action taken. Management wishes to report that a reconciliation of 2023 CDF program performance is assured in the table below. Chair, that is the table where it's showing Kembek constituency Katuba budget for Katuba constituency, 28,313,202 and retained funds were 1,52,432 and the expenditure to debt charge is 22,337,721. For Kembek constituency, the budget was 28,313,902. The funding was 27,313,902. The funding was twenty-seven million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy. Retained funds, one million and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-two. Disembossed amount, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy. Expenditure to debt, twenty-four million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and forty-six. Further, the performance shown in the table below. Chair, that is the table showing administrative, to debt, there's no balance. Community projects. We have three point four, three point three million fifty-nine. Disaster contingency. The funding was eight zero six. Balance as at thirty-first December twenty twenty-three was eight hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and forty-six. Expenditure to debt, four, forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine. And balance, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, five, seven hundred and fifty-six. Schools and schools development baseris. The funding was five point three million, chair. The expenditure, two point six. The balance as at thirty-first December twenty twenty-three, two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and forty-six. Expenditure to debt, three hundred, three million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-five. Balance is two hundred and thirty-two, two million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, one ninety-six. And should mention that this money has been buried. Empowerment grants. The funding, two million, one hundred thousand. Expenditure, two million. Balance as at twenty twenty-three, twelve thousand and sixty-nine quacha. Expenditure to debt, two million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight. Balance, twelve thousand and sixty-nine quacha. Empowerment loans, three million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five. Expenditure, two million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand and twenty quacha. Balance as the, as at thirty-first December twenty twenty-three, six hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five. Expenditure to debt, three million, two hundred and ten thousand and twenty quacha. Balance, seventeen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five. Chair, for Kembek, it is also explained there. The remedial, remedial measures. Management to endeavor to ensure that all expenditures are done within the stipulated budget. Return for Chief's Palace is explained there, chair. For Katuba, it was nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one. For Kembek constituency, it was nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one quacha. Cause of query. Funds were deducted at source. The contract is being executed by Zambia National Correctional Service under the means of local government and rural development. Action taken. Council has been working hand in hand with the Minister of Local Government. Plastering completed and the progress is at eighty-five percent. Below is the table showing the progress made on construction of Chief's Palace. Chair, in that table, the approved allocation CDF is one million. The status, main house, two return houses and meeting rooms have been plastered, progress at eighty percent. That is Katuba Palace for Chief Dennis Mongole. Construction of Chitanda Chief Dome. Construction of the palace, it is at seventy percent, chair. The approved allocation was one million. Remedial measures. Management to continue engaging with the Minister of Local Government and Rural Development to monitor the progress on the construction of Chief's Palaces. Chair, the Appendix Two, total and spent funds. If you check, that table is for ninety percent for Katuba. Balance of six million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and forty-five. Quacha for Katuba. Thousand quacha. Balance as at thirty-first December twenty twenty-three. Earlier alluded to. Balance as at thirty-first December twenty twenty-three, fourteen million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-six. And spent percentage is hundred percent. Cause of query. This was due to an appeal. The slop, and also the slow pace by the local contractors and run non-responsiveness by contractors on some of the adverts that were done. Action taken. A total of eleven million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-five quacha for Katuba has been spent to date. While a total of twelve million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and eleven has been spent to debt for Kembek constituency. Highlighted in the two tables below is the current status on community projects. Find the complete status attached on Appendix Nine. Chair, I'll go straight to remedial measures. Management shall ensure that the procurement processes are concluded within good time and that all incubaruses are rectified quickly to ensure that funds are spent within the stipulated financial year. And spent funds, empowerment grants. Chair, I'll go to the cause of query. Management wishes to acknowledge as observation and wishes to state that all the time, at the time of audit, there was a pending issue where one of the less disadvantaged wards complained about an equitable distribution of grants. Action taken. The funds have been disimpressed. Remedial measures. Management to ensure that funds are disbursed. Thirty-first December twenty twenty-three, twelve thousand and sixty-nine quacha. And spent percentage, one percent, that is for Katuba. Chibongo, Kembek constituency, amount received, two million, one twenty-three, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four quacha. And spent you can see, this is the same query. I'll go straight to the auditor's
You can skip.
So I'll go to the unspent percentage is fifty-one percent and said that the students that were not paid for were not present at the time of verification. Therefore, management only paid for those students present at the physical head count that was conducted to avoid spending on ghost students, chair. Action taken. Katuba, schools and skills development baseris. The funding was five million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-one. Expenditure, two million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five. Balance as at thirty-first December twenty twenty-three, two million, seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred and forty-six. Expenditure to debt, three million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-five. Balance, two million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-six. For Kembek constituency, funding, five million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-one. Expenditure, three million, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two. Balance as at thirty-first December twenty twenty-three, one million, five hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine. Expenditure to debt, four million, five hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine. Balance to debt, eight hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-one. Management wishes to report that most students have since been paid for to debt, as at to debt as highlighted in the table and further wishes to state that we shall continue conducting physical verification and shall, through the council, us, world development committees and all available communications channels, continue to encourage successful students to each school to extend. Remedial measures. Management shall continue spending the funds as guided in CDF guidelines. At chair, two point two unspent funds, administrative costs. Katuba, unspent sixteen percent. Kembek, unspent zero percent. All the funds were spent at the time there were still ongoing programs. Action taken. The funds, the funds have still, have since been spent as highlighted in the table below. So they've, they components four hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and five. Expenditure, one million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-six. Balance as at December twenty Management twenty-two community projects. Katuba constituency, twenty twenty-two brought forward forty-nine, implemented forty-eight. Work in progress, outstanding one. Kembek, projects for, brought forward from twenty twenty to forty, implemented thirty. Projects are completed on, in good time, chair. Appendix Four, twenty twenty-three community projects. Chair, I'll go, I'll go straight to the cause of query. Management acknowledges the audit findings and wishes to report that an aggrieved bidder had filed an objection with ZPPA. So the awarding of contracts until the matter was declared by ZPPA. Kindly see Appendix Two, ZPPA appeal documents. Other contributing factors were the slow pace by local contractors, upcoming contractors. The initial allocated amounts not being enough to complete entire project and delay in procurement of earth-moving equipment. Action taken. A total of seven hundred and thirty-five desks have since been supplied and delivered, leaving a balance of one thousand one to be delivered before thirty projects have since been met on the almost complete have been completed. See Appendix Twelve. Katua constituency and the Bonine Kembek constituency. Management wishes to further highlight the cause of query and action taken for the two outstanding projects for Katuba and the three outstanding projects for Kembek constituency, which is shown in the table there, chair. Remedial measures. Management to due to a lengthy approval of empowerment funds. Appendix Nine, failure to recover loans, chair. Cause of query. Management acknowledges the auditor's observation and wishes to state that the payment rate for the loan beneficiaries was very slow at the time of audit. Action taken. Following the issuance of warning letters to the defectors the process management acknowledges the auditor's finding that the number of graduates is as a result of discrepancies in the duration of programs being undertaken by students. Considering a number of students had dropped out for various reasons, as the discrepancy highlighted, seven hundred and ninety-three students out of a total of one million, one hundred and six have since graduated, leaving a balance of three hundred and thirteen students who did not report. Further, the sponsored beneficiaries expenditure was equivalent with a fee structure prevailing at the institutions. Following the achievements of the demand left a combined balance of three million, four hundred thousand, five hundred and forty-seven quacha. Action taken. Management wishes to report that the balance on the funds have since been utilized towards procurement of desks for Katuba constituency. Remedial measures. Management to ensure that sensitization is enhanced on the importance of of performance of desks. Cause of query. Management acknowledges the audit findings and wishes to report the procurement delivery was delayed due to in contract execution, leading to the deliveries not being In contract execution, leading to the deliveries not being complete as the contracts were still ongoing at the time of audit. Action taken, management wishes to report that out of the total of one thousand nine hundred desks, a total of seven hundred and ten delivered with a remainder of one thousand nine hundred and ninety to be delivered by the thirtieth April 2025. Remedial measures, management to ensure that desks are delivered timely through enhanced contracts management processes. Conclusion, I wish on behalf of management assure the committee that the council is committed to ensuring that the stated remedial measures are adhered to and reaffirms the council's dedication in implementing and enhancing practices of life for all the residents of Chivombo district. I submit, chair.
Thank you very much, CS, for that elaborate presentation. Honorable members, it is time now for interventions. Honorable member for Kaumbwe, Dr. Mwanza.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. We go to page six.
Let's go to page six.
Unimplemented projects. Project of interest is the desks. So the the two thousand seventy desks to. Of which one thousand three hundred and ninety-eight were delivered with the remainder to be delivered by thirtieth of April 2025, which is next month. This is, oh, this month, yes, which this is a project which on page six has information as the procurement, total number of procurement of desks and then the approved amount and then the start date, end date and outstanding works. So I have first of all to seek clarification on the table. The table shows that, for example, item number one, that this procurement of two hundred and thirty desks, the start date was twenty-second May 2024 and the completion date was July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. This contract was not supplied, why did it not supply? Because the the last quarter is showing during this contractual period that is in the table.
Thank you, Chair. Like I have indicated in my submission, these desks were not supplied because there was a bidder who was aggrieved, who appealed through ZPPA to state that he was not awarded despite him submitting the relevant documents. So ZPPA wrote to the council and instructed the council under Public Procurement Regulation two forty-three sub one of twenty-twenty-two to say suspend any implementation of these projects.
Follow-up question through you, Chair, yes. No, I, your man, action, the action taken is very clear. It shows that there was a bidder who appealed. But what I'm saying is the table on page six is misleading because the third column, one, two, three, four, five, yes, the third, the fourth and fifth column, they are showing that the contract, this period is a contractual period. It shows that this is a contractual period between twenty-second May 2024, that is the start of the project and the end of the project time is seventh, is twenty-second July. And during this period, nothing was supplied. So 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 it shows that the contract was already binding at the construction period.
It's gone. At this juncture, let me allow procurement to explain more on this one.
Procurement.
Thank you, Chair. At the time of audit, most of the desks were not submitted. But as it stands, we have mostly.
The question is, when were you audited?
Chair, let me take it up. We were September, Chair, this table.
At the date, September twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, Chair.
That's when you were audited.
Yes. However, Chair, this table is showing, we are trying to explain to say this is the time these desks were supposed to be supplied. But because of the incubator there, these desks we failed to receive the contractors.
May we have the original contract before before you come in, Dr. Mwaza, I allow, Honorable Siavonga MP. But can I have, you also have to prepare to show us where the contracts are and the letters of complaint from that contractor and also the letter from ZPPA. Honorable for Siavonga.
Chairperson, the question from my colleague, Honorable Mwaza, is asking whether what you are submitting orally now is is in is what is on the on your report. Is what you are submitting now the same as what is on the report?
Yes, Chair.
No. Both member for Siavonga and Dr. Mwaza, you have given us this schedule. From a layman's view, when you look at this schedule, indicating a binding contract. Yes or no? With you, it is indicating to a layman like me that these were binding contracts and the quantities were supposed to be delivered. Now, hold your fire. I told you earlier to be calm. To work with you. We are taking our time. These were binding contracts, different contracts, to supply the different quantities. Was there appeal on one contract or everything? Two, I will tell you to answer. What honorable member for Siavonga is asking? What you are now telling this committee is different from what is appearing on here. You are saying this one, you are just your own explanation that on this one, if I may use the ignore it, we are just trying to explain how the contract was supposed to run. Now, what you are submitting orally is the correct information. Now, the question is, which, what do we take? Your oral submission or what you have given us here?
May I respond, Chair?
Yes, you can go ahead.
The position is that we prepared the contracts for the contractors to sign. But before the contractors could come and get their from ZPPA to what we did until they did all that they could do, until a hearing was done, ZPPA, you may proceed. And that's how come now we signed the contracts, Chair.
I will allow honorable member for Siavonga, then I will come to Honorable Muto, then Dr. Mwaza. These are follow-ups. But as they make these follow-ups, I want you to refer for my interest, as they are doing that, the letters you are talking about is appendix what?
Appendix two, Chair.
Okay, good. So Honorable, we can go ahead.
All we wanted, Chair, is to be put because my colleague, Dr. Mwaza, is saying that this table is misleading. If what the CS is now submitting, the correct position, because there is no explanation here to say, no, there was that injection or appeal from others. So then the table is supposed to be put in that context that actually, yes, we we invited contractors or bidders. But at the end of the day, this is what we received. But when you look at it, just it's giving us a different picture together. We are not disputing what you are saying, but what you are saying is not intended moves what you are giving us now.
Thank you, Chair. May I submit that then, Chair, let us ignore that table and we follow what we submitted on the on the on appendix two. If it is misleading, Chair, we apologize for that.
So we take the appendix two.
We go to appendix two.
Let's go to appendix two. Do you sign the completion certificates when delivery, desks delivered?
There's delivery notes, Chair.
You have the delivery notes?
Chair, the delivery notes, engineer. I'll invite engineer Chair to explain more in the same.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you very much, Chair. So the delivery notes have been attached for the desks which were delivered in full. Thank you very much.
Only those delivered in full. So what happens when there is a partial or execution of the contract? Out of three hundred, someone just delivers two hundred, you don't sign anything?
Sorry, Chair, for that, even for partial, we we have the delivery notes attached to the.
So they are here?
Yes, Chair.
Okay. Any follow-up, Honorable Muto, you are there.
Chair, thank you so very much, Muto Misek, your humble servant. Save to say that she has said we ignore that table because that table is showing the ten. Twenty twenty-four. That's the start. And then the end, twenty-second July, twenty twenty-four. The appeal for such things is in the match. So that's how that table is misleading. How would an appeal come earlier before the tendering is done?
We apologize for that, Chair.
So I I follow you. I think not.
Sure, Chair.
It is misleading us. But this, this is an audit of twenty twenty?
Three.
Regardless of all what is happening, what we need, CS, is desks being what?
Delivered.
We cannot have desks procured, approved, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Some are not yet delivered. The one other word is iconoman. It can't be. Still, you still have more than one thousand. Can't be. Where are the pupils sitting? We have the new curriculum now. You sat on a desk to be a CS. That's just, that's my comment.
Thank you very much.
All these, yes, but at the end of the day, madam and your team, we want the desks what? Delivered, where? Katuwa and the Kembek. One general question, all of you, is CDF working or not? Is it a good tool or not?
Until I give you opportunity to respond, before you respond to that very important question, I'll ask Honorable Mweni take a short. Very short follow-up. CS, what problems are you facing with the production and the delivery of desks, which are very, very important? Because these are supposed to be locally done and delivered locally. What problems are you facing? I submit, Chair. Thank you. You can respond, CS.
Thank you, Chair. I'll start with if CDF is working or not. I wish to stay. If you have CDF, it is a game changer. If you came to Chivombo, Katuwa and Kembek, it has changed a lot of lives. If we are talking in terms of desks, where we've taken the desks as far as Makoka, the pupils and the members of the community, they are appreciating and the pupils there learning in a good environment. The problems that we are facing in Chivombo, of which is our concern too. Remember, there was a directive to first December twenty twenty-four, all pupils should not sit on the floor. But the contracted, some of them, they failed us. We've dragged them to police. We've written to them the termination letters and warning letters. Some, okay, they've said they'll deliver, but some we've terminated and we've also done new contracts. We've come with a contract, Chair, and that's why we are saying this time by thirtieth, we have desks. And why we are positive is because the secretariat sought for permission from the procurement committee to say if we can procure desks from those that have successful stories and that is what we've done. We followed those that have delivered in good time. Thank you, Chair.
What is the problem as asked by Honorable Mweni?
The problem is some of the contractors, when they they don't deliver on time, it's just the slow pace. We are pushing them, but they are slow.
You don't need to push them. What does the law say?
We have done that, Chair. Thank you.
I am asking you, answer the question, what have what have you done?
The law says if someone fails to terminate the contract, of course, by following through procedure, but.
Did you do that?
Yes, we did that, Chair.
So you had extended or maybe re-advertized?
We did some extensions with.
I mean, re-advertising?
We re-advertized, Chair.
And you have new contractors?
We have new contractors and we have come with the contracts, Chair. They were just signed, yes.
I will allow you, Dr. Mwaza, on this one, last one.
Mine is on procurement. You you had the total number of two thousand and seventy desks broken down into, I can say lots, of two hundred and thirty each. Total number is nine lots as on page six. At the procurement, did you advertise as one contract for two thousand and seventy desks? Or you advertised them as lots in two thirty quantities each?
You can end there so that you make follow-up. I'll make, I'll give you an opportunity. CS.
Thank you, Chair. I'll invite procurement officer.
Procurement.
Thank you, Chair. We we broke them down into lots of two thirty, two thirty as per word.
Follow-up question? So how did the how did the unfair treatment of Uchilamba? So how did the, how did the unfair treatment of Uchilamba, I know, I read the name of the supplier, who appealed to ZPPA? This Chalimba, how did this affect- affect the whole procurement process? Because he participated, obviously, in one of- Unless you tell us that he participated in all the lots and he made appeal to stop the process. How did he affect- Procurement?
Okay, thank you, Chair. He participated in one lot, but after he appealed, ZPPA had ordered us to suspend the whole tender, because they wanted to investigate the whole tender, the whole tender process.
Procurement, that is not how it goes.
Let me come in, Chair.
Just, when you, let you speak through the Chair. I should do manage this session until I give you that opportunity, that's when you respond. The question was direct, and we felt that you, Procurement, you are the right person to respond, because it doesn't add up. One, there were so many lots, and one appeals on one where he participated. What made ZPPA stop all the tenders? And is that the standard?
Thank you, Chair. The proof is there in the appendix on the letters that we received from ZPPA. Like I said, he participated in one lot, but what the whole procurement for Katuva, Katuva word.
What in your own wisdom, in your own view, what do you think made ZPPA to do that? If there is a problem at Lusaka City Council with the procurement, then ZPPA suspends all the procurements for all the ten provinces, or maybe all the hundred and sixteen districts, or one fifty-six constituencies. Is that a normal thing? If they suspect something is happening at Lusaka, how does it affect Jasef? How does it affect Siavonga? What did you think was this? And why didn't you, as a council, make an appeal? That why stop these other lots, which have no incumbences? Why stop it? You, as the related officers, did you see it strange or it was normal? Take it up, CS.
Thank you, Chair. I made a follow-up with the ZPPA, and I was told those two thirty desks, that one lot was under one tender. And that is how come the ZPPA wrote to us to say suspend everything.
So it was one tender?
That is what I was told, Chair.
Procurement, were you there?
At the, at the time, we were POAs, I was there.
I mean, were you involved in twenty twenty-three?
No, I wasn't.
Progress. Let's move to another question. Honorable member for Siavonga?
Chairperson, amongest men, I'll go to page twenty-five. Just to- We have, you have two constituencies in your, in your district. But perusing through your reports, it appears you have a lot of activities in Katuva and in Kembie. What could be the problem in terms of consumption, how many utilization of the CDF?
Before you, 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 you respond, I've made observations also. Maybe help us, help your committee. I will allow you to respond to that, but I can give you, before you respond, allow me, so that I, I just argument to what Honorable member for Siavonga, Honorable Mulunda stated. Kembie constituency and spent funds. So much- and spent. In twenty twenty-three, Kembie constituency, community projects. On page twenty-one, if you see. Hundred and eighty-nine, five hundred and forty-six was not spent for Kembie constituency. Whilst you see Katuva, there are some movements, something was done. Again, on spent funds, when you check the two constituencies, Kembie, you find secondary basaris, look at the figures. Again, Kembie is lagging behind. Katuva, there are activities taking place. Again, on empowerment grants, check the schedule, Kembie is not performing very well. It is only on the- component that Kembie spent more than Katuva are more. Or lagging behind. But when you look at administrative company cost, it is depleted. So when you observe, I also wanted to ask the question that Honorable member for Siavonga has asked. What would you tell this committee and the people of Kembie and this country, the two constituencies? If we got through the report, Kembie, there is less activities, and yet money received equal amounts, administered by yourselves, same officers? Are you just being unfair to Kembie? You are concentrating on Katuva? Or what explanation do you have for the people of Kembie? CS.
Thank you, Chair. Our concentration is on the two constituencies. As you may be aware, Katuva has eight wards, and Kembie has got thirteen wards. If you go to Katuva, Katuva is an extension of Lusaka. If you go to Kembie, Kembie, the terrain is bad, and the constituency is so vast. I'm sure when delivering resources, that can be a problem. But also, I wish to highlight, Chair, that at one point, before we could implement-
On a lighter note, so you concentrate where it's near Lusaka? Because Kembie, that's what you are telling this committee?
Not, Chair. I'm trying to explain.
It was a serious one, but sort of.
It's not a not, on a lighter note. That's why Lusaka is not Zambia. If such a thing was to happen, you are not going to see money in Katuva, because the construct, the concentration would be where? In Lusaka.
Proceed.
Chair, Katuva, like I mentioned, yes, it is near Lusaka, but even the distances, they are shorter. But if you came to Kembie, I'm sure-
CS, I'm forced to stop you.
Okay.
If I was your employer immediately, I was going to recommend for a serious action against you. You cannot deprive the people of Kembie on account of what you are saying. The justification is not good. The people who need the desks most are those people in Kembie, far off from the- And if you know, the system is that the people, even in the way the president has come up with this enhanced CDF, for any information, take a deep breath and see what the president is trying to communicate. He is saying those people who were deprived of development, of the basic amenities, are the ones who appreciate and need to be addressed. But when you are saying, CS, that you know the distance to Katuva, and Katuva is near Lusaka, so it's very easy, it has eight wards. If I were you, I could have concentrated on those people. When you look at this report, I am happy, Dr. Mulunda, I missed, sorry, you are not doctor, Mr. Mulunda. Mr. Mulunda, you know, he's been sitting next to Dr. Singambi, so- Honorable Mulunda, he has brought up a very important thing. Just a glance of this report, you do say and you do ask, "Why Kembie?" And now it's good that you yourselves as officers are responsible for this. You have concentrated on Katuva because it's near Lusaka, and it has fewer wards than Kembie. That's what you are telling this committee by your justification. Before you respond, let me ask you, Honorable Mulunda.
Thank you, Chair. Just an addition, just like you are putting it. And then the response that is coming from our council secretary is indeed true. I think her submission is correct, that Katuva is near Lusaka with better roads. But there is a contradiction here, because on page twenty-one, they didn't use any money, because it's far to go to Kembie, it's very far. So they never used any amount of money. But when you come, sir, to page, page twenty-five, the administrative component is gone. So I don't know the explanation.
Chair, can I answer, Chair?
Before you answer, I would like to ask you, Honorable- Thank you, Chair. The reasons given on page twenty-one is this was due to an appeal. We had off the appeal on desks, even on, on this, there was also another appeal.
Yeah, yeah.
We all do it, an appeal. I've gone through appendix nine. Being near to Lusaka, it's not- No, Chair, you agreed to say, yes, we take and- Those are- It's coming. Why didn't you state to say, "It's because Katuva is near to, to Lusaka"? You opted to keep it just to come and say it. Here, what you have written is different. Yes?
Did you finish?
And now the Kembie administrative component, Kembie administrative component, it's very near to, to be utilized. In terms of the real issues to go into Katuva, it is too far. Of the- For Kembie come from, on what if the projects in Kembie were not- Because it's too far.
CS, you can respond.
Thank you, Chair. I was explaining, but I was cut short. I wanted to add, to say, in Kembie, in twenty twenty-three, I was exact, Chinongola boys and Chinongola girls, even there, there was an appeal. And that also dragged us. So what happened, Chair? I'll take you to page appendix number three. There was a letter that was written to me by the honorable minister to say she had received an appeal from the, the bidders to say what we did, we did not follow procedure and such. The other documents that these bidders submitted were, I don't know if they were removed. So what I did, Chair, I wrote to ZPPA. ZPPA invited me and my subordinates to go and take all the evidence. But, Chair, that is time consuming. So we went there, we testified, officers gave reports. And, Chair, after that, ZPPA allowed- was told, Chair, that we should take action. If you read through appendix three, Chair, there are all those evidence to show that. That is what ZPPA allowed us to do. There was an appeal, Chair. Are you with us?
Yeah, on the appeal, let me just ask you. You have been in the office for some time, and you understand your office. Where is the appeal supposed to be lodged? To the Minister of Logament, to yourselves, or to ZPPA?
Chair-
According to standard, not this one?
The appeal is supposed to go to ZPPA, but this one is the area member of parliament asking me to stop what I'm doing. So I'm here as council secretary to say, I cannot stop, let me-
Let me, I'm, I'm not mentioning names of ministers. According to the standard of government operations or appeals, where is the appeal supposed to go?
The appeal is supposed to go to ZPPA.
But this one went to the area member of parliament?
This one, yes, Chair, from the look of things.
Did you see the appeal?
Yes, I was given a letter.
The letter of appeal?
The letters were attached to the letter from-
How did ZPPA summon you? Or you took yourselves there?
It was after I wrote to them to say-
Okay, you attached that letter?
Yes, I attached the letter to explain, to say these are the circumstances.
So you were taking yourselves to ZPPA?
By then-
A complaint and also scalping yourselves?
By then, they were, they had also the letters from the other side.
Okay.
So even when I was going, I was writing to them, they indicated to us to say they've since received the same appeal, but they invited us to go now and give submissions, and that is what we did.
Okay, we, we make progress.
Just a short one, Chairperson, because I'm seeing the, our CS finding it difficult to give us very short answers from- is if there was an appeal at, what's that name again?
ZPPA.
No, 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 Chire school.
Chinongola boys and Chinongola girls, secondary school.
The question is, you only had planned for two projects in the-
The whole twenty-three.
In Kembie, the whole twenty-three, that is number one. Number two, we are saying, since there was an appeal there, how did you deplete the administrative cost? Yes, those simple ones. How did you deplete that component when there are no works going on because there was an appeal? Three, were there only two projects for the whole twenty-three in Kembie?
Thank you, Chair. Oh, should I proceed?
Yes, proceed.
Thank you, Chair. If you look at table two point one and spent fund?
Yes.
Okay, let me proceed.
If you have challenges, ask your DPO and other officers to help you. The way you're explaining, that's why you entangle yourself so much. Simple questions from Honorable Mulunda and all the members here. Kembie in twenty twenty-three, these community projects worth fourteen million, not spent. Was it only, only two projects? Is it only two, two projects that you had approved for twenty twenty-three?
No, Chair.
And if that is the case, how do you explain the one point four million administrative component?
Thank you, Chair. Before I call upon the DPO, let me explain. The one point four as at thirty-first December, twenty twenty-three was not spent. But after everything, after we were allowed to proceed with the projects, we started implementing, and that is how it was spent, Chair.
Let me, CS, you are giving us a problem. We are reading your report. Your report indicated that by, this is January to December, twenty twenty-three. The administrative component for Kembé was depleted. Was depleted. Now, if the appeal or maybe the contest, uh, was only two projects. Are these two projects, where are these two projects costing Kembé constituency fourteen million? This is fourteen million.
Um, thank you, Chair, they were not on two projects. Let me invite DPO to come in.
Thank you very much.
Who closed the mic?
Thank you very much, Chair. I'll draw your attention to page seven. Chair, I'll start with the, I'll add in addition to the projects which delayed us in implementing in the, the non-expending of the funds on the twelve projects with an allocation of five million. Chair, here we had the issue of grading of roads and also procurement of a grader. I think the grader, Chair, is one of the projects which delayed us. Because at the time of procurement, it was discovered that the funds were not enough. Therefore requiring variations. And those are some of the meetings which consume the administrative cost. And also Nkanga Radio, at the time we first approved, Nkanga Radio was not in the picture. But later on, it came on, I submit.
Where were the meetings? Where are they flying or? And how much per meeting? And how many meetings? And, and where are the minutes? Take note of that.
Chair, with your indulgence, we've heard. Let's proceed to some other questions. The more they will be answering, the more be going into deeper waters. Because a meeting to vary funds cannot consume all the administrative costs for Kembé. It can't. It's just my appeal, Chair.
I take note. In short, he's saying we, we seem not to be heading anywhere. Um, next question, I'll ask Dr. Manza. Then when you come?
It's a simple one on page seven. I just want to, on page seven, there's a procurement of equipment for, on the table, one of the projects. Procurement of equipment for the Nkanga District Community Radio Station. At an amount of eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twelve. This project. Which WDC approved this, 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 this project? And is it in accordance with the guidelines of the CDF? Can we support community radios? If we support community radio, then under which category of the, the CDF expenditure? Would it be capital project, uh, administration component or so on and so forth? Because the category matters on how you arrive at. Because for capital projects, we have, it's either the project is by presidential directive or it comes from the WDCs.
Okay, take note. Oh, is there a follow-up? Okay.
Thank you so much, Chair. I think just to extend to Honorable Dr. Manza on page eight. About ten projects there with about six point five million, one hundred seventy-four thousand, seventy-five thousand kuacha. Chair, I've gone to the appendix, which is appendix three. CS, you are stating that these projects were completed. Now, where are the completion certificates? I've gone through, I have seen they are not ten. So maybe they can guide your committee to the ten completion certificates for these ten projects. I submit, Chair, very short one.
Yes, I thank you. CS, start with there or you can choose to start with.
Thank you, Chair. I'll start with Nkanga Radio. Chair, the people of Kembé and Katuwa. The WDC.
Brilliant, Chair.
And Chair, what happened was that the two area members of parliament, they agreed after, of course, through CDFC to say each constituency should come halfway. Like for Kembé constituency, uh, the amount that was allocated was four hundred and twenty-five thousand. For Katuwa constituency, they are. Twenty-five thousand. So the total was eight hundred and fifty thousand kuacha. Uh, both radios, both constituencies sat and approved and, uh, formal procedure, Chair.
That is enough. I fear you may entangle. You, yes. So ask, respond to Honorable Mweni.
On the completion certificates, Chair, allow me to invite director engineering, the Kwas Kamang.
Director engineer, before you respond to that, were you there in twenty-three?
Uh, no, Chair, I wasn't there. Uh, I only came in, in January twenty-twenty-four.
DPO, were you there?
Yes, Chair.
How do you explain community radio station? You are coming up with the scopes of work, the BOQ. Before execution, you discover the money is not enough. You come to the grader. Is it the grader which is at on page seven? Again, the costing not enough variation. How do we trust the competences of the officers in this case? Another one is the procurement of an engine. A engine of a grader NOX. What do you call it? It NOX, eh? Yeah. It has, it's damaged. The engine, which is the vehicle, is damaged. Then you put money aside, CS, that we want to replace the engine. Before you replace the engine, you say, no, 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 no. Actually, replacing an engine, it would not work. The entire vehicle is a problem, so we don't buy an engine. How do you explain that? What is a vehicle? So start from Honorable Mweni, but I wanted to, and this is weakness. Took us to page seven. There are issues on page seven. That we are failing to understand the competence of the team, procure whoever is involved to come up with the BOQs of any project. You under value. Then before you execute. Now, at which point do you realize that this project, is it at tendering? At procurement, I don't know, which stage that you prescribe a variation? Those who come, start with Honorable Mweni.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, concerning the grader engine, as you may be aware, Chair, in the local authority or should I say in government, there is perpetual succession. So when we discovered that, uh, there is an application and a BOQ that a grader engine should be bought. When I came in, I requested Lusaka City Council to come on board. One's engine, there's a company called Cumms. Cumms, I invited them, Chair. Assessments, they advised to say even. You bought an, even if you were to buy an. Not work. And that is how come now. We reported back to CDFC to say this is the position, Chair. Uh, on the issue of coming up with a BOQs, I'll ask engineer. And on the issue of competences of the officers with the BOQs, I'll ask engineer to elaborate more on that one.
Engineer.
With, um, with the two projects which were varied. Um, initially, a full assessment wasn't done um, on the, uh, the parts which needed to be changed, more especially on the grader. So after the CS invited the, the two companies to come up with an assessment, uh, that's when we discovered that it would be more costly to actually, um, repair the, the said machine. So at that point, we thought that, um, it would be best that, um, the, the, the project is just changed to a different project altogether. Then with regards to BOQs, um, the, 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 the variations at times, um, or rather the variations were coming about due to insufficient allocation of funds. I think many are the times where we've advised the committee to say this project to. End of the day. Location is allocated towards that project. So during execution.
Are these.
Taking at the moment, they are, they are full contract.
With less allocation, let's say for example, a one by three, I'm giving an example. A one by three by standard can cost nine hundred, one million or one point two. Then they allocate five hundred and you tender them and the people bid. Is what you are telling us?
Um, ideally, that is not what is supposed to be done, but that is what is. That, that is what was being done, but you also face the project. Um, say it should only reach up to maybe roof level for phase one.
Chair, with your indulgence, sir. You are there as a technical advisor. You are the expert. The members of CDFC shall have to follow what the planner and yourself will put on the table. They don't generate any. They don't. And since, Chair, they are not here to defend themselves, will not take what you are saying. We follow what you advise us. If you say according to the monies we have and projects, we have a one by three classroom block built, this much. I don't think they will argue to say bring it at five hundred. No. So note that, Chair, through you.
Yeah, and it's sad, your mic, it's sad to hear that, that you are still implementing projects which are phased. The, from twenty-twenty-two, the government has blessed us with a lot of money. You pick a project, you start it and hand it over. But the director are telling us that is what is happening in Chivombo, phasing projects. It is very unfortunate and you as officers, you should be, we are advising you. With that thing coming, if it comes, you should advise, put it in writing that this is, this is the cost and you have. The ZPPA, what? Price index. They have even minister. That such a. This and that. Why should do? And that's what my, why should the CDF committee insist to say allocate less money? Then the other money will come twenty-twenty-six. And you are there, you're not supposed to do that. But because they are not here to defend themselves. That's why I said, where are the competences? Because I see a gap. If you can't guide, these are, we are reading, all this we are talking about is coming from your report. Do you know that? Yes, we have not manufactured these questions and these reactions. We are reading what has been highlighted by the auditors. Kembé. Next question. Oh, his question was not answered. You can repeat the question.
Chair, I repeat the question. And the question is. On these ten projects that you have showed on page eight. That were not yet completed, you are now telling your committee that it's a completed. I have gone to appendix three. I have not found, um, the relevant completion certificates. If they are here, there are only three that I've counted. Where are the other completion certificates? If truly the projects are completed as indicated in the same appendix three on the first page of appendix three, where you have showed the, uh, pictures of this structure. We're giving us. One and say the project is here, it was completed, but we needed a completion certificate. They are not enough here, so where are they? I submit, Chair.
Chair. Chair, with your indulgence, reading, yes, you are winding. So a quicker one. Procurement plan.
Question.
And the grants. What must we do together to help the positive side of CDF? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Manza, bullet, bullet questions?
Page eleven, the laboratory.
Page eleven?
Yes, the laboratory at Imbalama. Imbalamba Nyama. Malama Nyama, sorry, yes. At Imbalama Nyama, you have handed over to the school and it's now in use as by the action taken. I did not see, is, is the laboratory equipped or not? And if you're not equipped, so what is the function? That you do, what purposes would it, would it sort when it's a science laboratory without equipping it with?
Let's get from them. The science laboratory, is it handed over and is functional as indicated? Yes, respond to the three.
Thank you, Chair. I also wanted just to have a quick comment on the phasing out of projects. In Chivombo, more specifically in Katuwa and Kembé, we do not phase projects, Chair. I just wanted that to be on record and also.
Sorry, CS. CS, we are getting these things from your director engineering.
That's why I'm correcting, Chair.
That's why we, we warned you. Do not, whom do we believe now? When you come here, you should be responding to this. Don't come here to respond to us as an academic thing. Whatever you say, you make these people not respond. We want the people of Kembé, Katuwa. What you are saying here is what is prevailing. We asked, sorry, why did you do variations? The director engineering said, because the monies allocated were not enough despite our advice. They said we shall phase, do up to certain level. It is him. So now you, you are contradicting your own officer.
I withdraw my statement, Chair. Then proceeding to the laboratory, Alambanyama, Chair. Uh, this is at Malambanyama Primary School, as you may be aware, it is Taveta certified. So before a laboratory is put into use, Taveta, they come to certify if all the equipment is adequate. And Chair, I wish to mention that this laboratory has been, since been. And Chair, I wish to mention that this laboratory has been, since been commissioned by the area Member of Parliament. Because it's fully functional, Chair. And I wish to invite
When, I want to guide you. Don't put your area Member of Parliament on the spot. And by saying this project has been commissioned.
Sure, Chair.
For the interest, the people who commission can be an MP, can be a DC, can be Minister of the Province, can be Minister responsible for local government. Just end it there.
Thank you, Chair. Concerning the EGP, I wind up after DPO and procurement states their points. And also, I would wish to ask DPO to explain on the loans where we are in Chibombo district.
So procurement, be on standby, they will respond. I will make them respond to your question. I am aware. Those of you, as your friend is, your friend is preparing to respond, those others should also be ready. So that when I point at you, you quickly come in. Who starts?
DPO, on the loans.
Thank you very much, Chair. Loan recoveries. On loan recoveries, Chair, our payment rate is very low. However, like the auditor general observed, we've not been idle. We first called for a meeting where we had to caution these loan beneficiaries on the replications of the loan agreements they made. Evidence is attached on appendix seven. Upon having a poor attendance, we thought of individual letters to the defaulters, which are also, we have attached a few samples. And we have continued, Chair, to engage them. So far, though the percentage is low, from the last report which we received from Zanako, where Katuwa was at four percent, now it has risen a bit to seven percent as of March twenty twenty-two. However, Chair, it's a component which is really problematic.
The other, the other constituency?
The other constituency is at three percent.
The current situation?
Yes. Yes, Chair.
The other responses?
Thank you, Chair. Concerning the EGP system, I think it's just, it's working just fine for Chibombo. The only challenge we have network issues due to power, power cuts.
Is that not a challenge?
Yes, that's one, that's a major challenge that we have concerning the EGP system.
I heard you say it's working very well.
Yeah, aside from that, everything is just going on well.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
CS.
Chair, yes, I concur with what the PO has stated. But earlier when we started, we had problems with the EGP. The local contractors were being advantaged. Why? Because they didn't know how to go about the
Were being advantaged?
Disadvantaged.
Okay.
So what we did as a council, we called the business community and the local contractors. We sensitized them and also invited ZPPA and also the province, the procurement officers from the province to sensitize the community. And now as we are talking, we have a good number that is participating in the procurement.
On the loans, loan recovery, who plays the center stage? I've heard you and another council attributing to the non-recovery to the bank. How is the system? Is the council having any role? And if it has, what is that role?
Thank you, Chair. I will invite DPO to explain on that one.
DPO.
Thank you very much, Chair. The issue of following up on repayments according to the CDF guidelines for the local authority, this happens upon receipt of the repayment report. But previously, we've just had
You have received the report now?
We have received the
For what?
For March.
So now, what is your role?
So the next issue now is to follow up on the loan defaulters.
You or the bank?
Ourselves.
I've heard you attributing to the problem, the bank, the bank. The bank is role, I want to state it for those who are also listening. On the recovery of loans, it is the councils that are supposed to play a major role. You know these people and what, correct, or if there was any, they submitted. And you are the ones who are supposed to make a follow-up. But you are telling us through that response that it is the bank. The bank is role is, even you, at any time, you are supposed to go to the, to the bank and say, can I have the report? You use it to go and that's why they have given you. And the problem of this recovery is the council. So you are not doing much to recover these loans. I want to make it very clear. We are aware as a committee. So no council will come, the failure to collect the three percent for Kembé, the seven percent for Katuwa is because you are not doing your job. And if this was a basis for assessment, you do fail the assessment. Why are you failing DPO or DP now and your team? How many times do we have reports of you meeting these people? Not even, even bring pictures. These people are known. The president has said it very clear, people should pay back the loans. Why are you not doing that job? Have you reported this to police? If not, CS, tell us when you report them.
Thank you, Chair. We've intensified the sensitization and also
Have you reported them to police? If not, when? Answer the questions as they come.
We reported one, but we are, we are taking litigation now. Because as
Why one? When the percentage of repayment is a six percent, seven percent, a three percent? He's the only one who go the loans, the entire loan
No, Chair.
Why this unfortunate one? Why did you choose him?
Because he never paid anything and we thought maybe just got money by a false pretense, Chair.
Can you follow up within those other people?
Sure, Chair, we do that.
Okay. Honorable Munda, short one.
Just a short one.
The question for Mr. Honorable Munda before you come. The question was what? Only I
Chair, I would love to be televised through and through alone. And I can repeat the question for the third time. Chair, I'm asking about completion certificates. Go to appendix three. You show us your ten completion certificates.
Director Engineering.
In a short way.
Thank you very much, Chair. So when we go to appendix, appendix three, there is the first completion certificate just after the photocopies of the contracts.
How many are there?
The way you are perusing, there could be more than ten, because I've seen.
Chair, ideally, they are supposed to be
How many are they there? As we wait for the director to count, it seems to be so many. Honorable Mulunda, you had your short one. CS, remember the ten certificates. Director, continue counting.
I just wanted to argument on what you have said, Chairperson, because when the councils, all the councils, they seem to be pushing the recovery to the, to the bank. But that contract is signed between you and the beneficiaries, isn't it? Is it the bank that signs?
Chair, it is the, the, the bank.
No, madam, madam, I'm asking, just, I just need the answer, you or not? Switch off your mics, yes. That contract is signed by who? Those forms are provided by who? Is it not the council?
It is the council, Chair.
So the council knows the beneficiaries. You just received the recovery through the bank. But what you have seen is, all the councils, I'm glad you have put that message across the nation. They, they want to hide. Yesterday, I was telling the witness, Chairperson, when you are not around, that you get, you get the document at the end of the month. As the local authority, DPO, you go to the bank, I want to see against this. Can you print out? I want to see how many have paid or they have not paid, their performance is low. When you come to, before this committee, you must be able to tell us that I went to the bank and this is what I've got. We need a printout from the bank that this is what you're, then if you leave the bank to do on it, so then you are failing. The failure, Chairperson, is the local authority, it's not the bank. I thought I should
Thank you very much. Director Engineering. Now let's allow director to count how many certificates are there.
Thank you very much, Chair. So from the copy I'm using, only five certificates have been attached and we apologize for that.
Don't apologize before the next follow-up comes. You see, CS, when you come here, come to respond on the queries. Do not come just to respond, to give answers without following what has been questioned. I'm talking to you, CS. I've seen it in you, I've seen it in your directors. What Honorable Munda asks you? Is a contract signed between the bank and yourselves? You want to go veering off the question? Honorable Munda asked, how many IPCs are there? You want to go round. State five, how many times did you count them?
Thank you so much, Chair. Throw you. CS, now that you only have got five completion certificates and ten pictures of these you are claiming. Where are the other completion certificates? One, two. How true is it that these ten projects that were picked by the auditors, that they were not are truly completed when there is no evidence of their completion? Because pictures, you can even go outside there, you capture a house and you indicate here that no, the house was completed. Meanwhile, when you go down on the ground, it's truly not completed. So if we go in your constitution, in this structures truly complete, because we are going to have a local tour very soon and we will pass this way. And we can go round and check all these structures first before we proceed anywhere else. So apart from this pictorial evidence, documentation, that is so important, that we can produce before a committee that truly these structures were completed. I submit, Chair.
CS.
Thank you, Chair. Indeed, Chair, the way you rightly put it to say we are supposed to attach documentation. And unfortunately, we've only attached five. We wish to apologize, Chair. We are supposed to attach ten. But I can assure this August House Chair that indeed these projects, they've been completed.
You see, CS, we are an evidence-based committee.
Sure.
When these audits are taking place, very soon you'll be having other audits. We don't come there. We just read what has been reviewed and ask you questions, why and how? And if the basis of promotion was apology, you could have been a town clerk or maybe someone else. Because in councils, you have mastered just to apologize. And you go back there, you don't even reflect how your performance is. As long as you can come, no, we sincerely apologize. Liza Fay, you working you are not working to help the people of Chibombo. I can tell you if you, you appeared on the operations accounts, the same way you are answering. It is a routine. You are not helping this country. Not helping yourself. Be people who want to bring change in whatever position. Guidelines are there, regulations are there. Monitoring vehicle, you don't even go to monitor DP loans. The councils are don't want to mention. Who will tell you, give you reports and minutes? If we are going to ask the minutes of your tours to go and check these beneficiaries of loans and grants, they will be new. And yet you are supposed to visit maybe quarterly or twice in a quarter and you come up with a report such as a cooperative or whatever, they go to this and this is what we found. Nothing. And CS, you are there watching your people. How do you assess them? People not paying loans. Three percent recovery. And you want to say the bank is not doing enough. What do you want the bank to do? Doing enough by presenting a report. It is your duty. DP, district planner, you are not doing enough. You are the one, this failure on loans, grants, it's you, your department and everyone, if there is a social economic planner, whoever is involved. You are depleting the administrative cost for what? And we would like to appeal to you, auditors. When you go to every council, audit how many meetings, which meetings and how people attended. All these are administrative comment of CDF. You finish it. One council, one witness, Chair, Honorable Munda, one council. Negative. Count to pick money just to spend for administrative and yet projects are not moving fourteen million and spent. Where are we taking this country? There are so many people out there with credentials. If you see the evidence, how many people want to get your jobs? This is the basis. If you look at the IPC, the completion certificates, I mean, completion certificates, you look at the basic elements. What is the principle, what is supposed to be? You just pick a paper without following the certain issues that are supposed to be there. Each council can have its own completion certificate. This council, its own. Here you have another person signing, the director. Where are you? We ensure and we shall be meeting the minister to by here. What are they mean? The elements of a completion certificate. You know them. But if you look at those and Y five, no, we did this. CS. I'm winding up. Areas of concern. Delayed of projects. Honorable members are like for Kembé constituency, fourteen million, fourteen point what? Fourteen million, two hundred and eighty-nine, five forty-six thousand only and spent money for twenty twenty-three because someone had protested, appealed. Can it take that period to appeal? And why is it that? And why is it that even on grants, there is an appeal? Anything, there is an appeal. Desks, appeal. There is need to check your procurement system. It is strange to have more appeals. Indicating that there's something wrong, you, CS, should take, why? We're asking why. Local Government Service Commission to find out what is the problem. Not true that appeals are there, there are no more. But not in everything, there is an appeal. So procurement, department, there is a problem. Audit, those who audit these projects. The BOQs, you cannot fail to come up with a BOQ. Because even the laboratory, it was professionals. You are listening to the President, no more phasing of a- When you choose a project, start and complete within. That's why it is- Right price, quick delivery, and highest quality. Now, when you look at the- You procure a project, then it is phased. How do you explain that? That area should be addressed. When you look at the, these basaries, check the report on basaries for Kembé, as we said earlier. Lacking- If you look at the grants, law. It calls for you to say, what is the problem? Engage the relevant offices, WDCs, every CDF committee. Why do we have law uptake of basaries? Why do we have a problem on recoveries is Kembé? Everything is Kembé. You should raise a flag. And that is the area of focus for you. But you, you said the area that, no, 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 actually, because Kembé has more wants. And Kembé is Goturudo, the roads are bad. In Usaka here, we are near. That is fair to Kembé. The people of Kembé deserve the best like any other. And that is why this in his CDF is a blessing to those in the rural part of this country. Those who never had an opportunity. It says they are also Zambia. At the same time. The other one is disputes over even on grants. Grants, you should have disputes. Everything is disputed. What is the role of the DP, social economic planner, everyone, even you and CS? Should take interest, that's why me have been advocating that we should change the law. Council secretaries, town clerks should be members of the CDF committee. It just is it. And yet, your officers are not doing correct things. So I've talked about these issues. Administrative component, as I said earlier. We want to take interest. Why you deplete it when there is zero action on the projects? So, lastly. There are other councils which have two constituencies. Chibombo is one of them. But what we have seen is the bias towards one constituency and not doing much to other. Is it attributed, CS, to fewer staff? Other councils have got two districts. There is no such a problem, there's a balance. But you, you are leaning on one side. Is it an issue of just your attitude? That you don't want to go to the rural, you want to stick to the urbanized part of Chibombo? Or is it an issue that you, you need more staff, you only? When you are dealing with two districts? This is an issue that we have observed and we want it to be- If it is your side who are deliberately trying to let down Kembé, we should tell the commission to find right people for the position. That is going to help the entire Chibombo, not to be bad. Help Katua, help Kembé. Balance. And I'm very happy that you want, we should be one of the councils that has come with so many staff. This is what we want. Because tomorrow, we don't want that I was not there. Others should learn. So in winding up, I want to say, I would like to ask you to respond. So the question, I'm seeing your finger. Yes. In winding up, that's what I wanted to say. As you take home, we are not pleased as a committee. We have noted those areas and we want to see change. We are reluctant to admit your report. It is one of not a good report. So many queries, money is in the accounts and spent. Then tomorrow, you say government is mopping up money. You are being political. You are failing to utilize the money, then you want to accuse government. We are not going to allow that. So each one of you, as you take interest, your areas and please, we are not going to allow this to reoccur. With that said, I would like to withdraw the immunity that that area conferred on you, that from now on, you are on your own and wish you well. Go and clean the house. Go and do the best for Chibombo. Thank you very much and have traveling messes.
Thank you so much, Chair. Everything that has been stated are well noted and we'll try to work hard.
Correct.
There you have it, that was Chibombo Town Council, just from making an appearance before the committee on local government accounts. And that's on the consideration of the report of the Auditor General on the constituency development fund for the financial year ended 31st December 2023. And the committee chairperson did indicate that the committee is not pleased with the submission that Chibombo Town Council has made. And still, to make an appearance before the committee is Mukushi Town Council. Uh, for those that, for those of you that have just joined us or those of you that have been following us, Mukushi Town Council did make their submission earlier on in the day. And at some stage, they were sent out for the committee to discuss on a particular transaction, which they needed to make a decision on. And so we do expect Mukushi Town Council to appear before the committee, keep watching parliament television, even as we stand by for the appearance of Mukushi Town Council.